All right, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Hawaiian Affairs Committee hearing. I'm Senator Miley Shimabukuro, Chair of the Committee. Other members of our committee are Vice Chair Kurt Favella. We also have Member Herbert Tim Richards. We have Member Lesihara and Member Jer Kyo Ho Kalole. This hearing is being streamed live on YouTube. You can find links to viewing options for all Senate hearings and meetings on the live and on-demand video page for the Legislature's website. If you're interested in seeing the written testimony, go to the Legislature's website, which is capital.hawaii.gov. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing prior to major technical difficulties, the Committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business, and that'll be probably on Tuesday in Room 224. And it'll be video conference and live, and a public notice we posted on the Legislature's website. For the people testifying remotely, all testifier audio will be muted and video disabled until your turn to testify. And as is the Committee's practice, there's a two-minute time limit per testifier. If there are any temporarily technical glitches during your turn to testify, we may have to move on to the next person due to time constraints. We appreciate your understanding and remind you that the Committee has already received your written testimony. I'll be reading a list of people who submitted written testimony for each, for this measure. We apologize again if the closed caption doesn't actually transcribe your names. Again, if you're interested in seeing the written testimony, go to capital.hawaii.gov. And members, please wait to ask your questions for the testifiers until we have gone through all the testifiers for this measure. And welcome to Senator Lesihara for being here. And so for today's agenda, we have GM 524 submitting for consideration the confirmation as the Chairperson, Department of Hawaiian Homelands, gubernatorial nominee Kali Watson, for a term to expire December 31st, 2026. So first up, we have the Governor, Dr. Josh Green, in support. We are representatives, okay? Next, we have Don Chang, DLIR Chairperson, in support. Ahamoku Advisory Committee, Leamana Delmatte, support. Thank you so much, Leamana. DLIR, support. DOT, these are all in support. DOT, Department of Health, Department of Finance Department, Department of Public Safety, Department of Finance, again, Enterprise Technology Services, Department of Law Enforcement, Hawaii Public Housing Authority, Office of Planet Sustainable Development, Department of Defense, Department of Taxation, and if you're here, Pilfered is just some, call it your name, Department of Agriculture. And then we've got some individuals, who goes to next. We've got Ray Soon, former DHHL Chair, in support. Chris Sareasu, in support. We have Commissioner Patty Kahana Mukutiruya, in support. Hello, yes, feel free to come forward if you'd like. She'll be followed by Zachary Helm, also Commissioner.
Aloha, Senator Miley Shimabukuro, Chair, Senator Kurt Favella, Committee Chair, and members of the Hawaiian Affairs Committee. Aloha, my name is Patty Kahana Mukutiruya, DHHL Commissioner for Oahu, Chair of the Nanakuli Neighborhood Board 36, and a Hawaiian homestead beneficiary in Nanakuli. I'm here today speaking on behalf of myself and not on the boards that I currently serve. I usually don't testify at anyone's appointment, but I felt that this appointment was important for me to express my support for Mr. Kali Watson. I had known Kali for several years, supporting several of our projects in Nanakuli coming in front of our neighborhood board. The Halemakana of Nanakuli consisted of 48 affordable units located in Nanakuli was not supported by several, but today, the residents that don't support live in there today. We also have the Nanakuli Boys and Girls Club, Nanakuli Village Center, located in the Piko of Nanakuli, a commercial center which consists of many awesome eatery, medical facility, dialysis, and the Kamamea Learning Center. This provides employment and economic development for the Hawaiian Coast. Kali has always provided open information to our board and community, where some may not have agreed on, but today realizing how much values this project has helped in so many in our community. Today, many organizations have the opportunity at no cost to have community events, Ma Keke Markets, COVID awareness programs, Christmas in Nanakuli, and in our upcoming Fourth Annual Prince Kohio Celebration on March 25th. With his experience, knowledge of development, and the Hawaiian Homestead Act, I have every confidence that Kali will lead the staff as well as the Commission to move forward together. He's quite a smart individual, passionate, especially when it comes to people. As I've never witnessed him, mad or upset, questioned or attacked at our neighborhood board meetings or any community town meetings, he would calmly listen, ask, and find solutions for all of us. In closing, I believe his heart is for our waitlist, kupunas, and the many beneficiaries in the state of Hawaii. He will bring moral and integrity back into the department and work with the Commission in moving forward together for the legacy of our Prince Jonah Kohio. I urge your vote to pass this confirmation to the full Senate in supporting Kali Watson for the Department of DHHL Commission Chair. There's a lot of work to do ahead for DHHL. Given this opportunity, he will not waste any time moving us all forward to succeed together. Mahalo, Nui Lord, Senators.
Mahalo, Ms. Kahana Mukutiruya. Zachary Helm, also Commissioner for Molokai, in support. Ko'la Poko Hawaiian Civic Club, in support. We've got Everett Dowling from Dowling Company Incorporated, in support. And he'll be followed by Kipukai Kuoli'i, Vice Chair of Kauai County.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity, members of the Committee. I've known Kali for 27 years. He was Chair of Hawaiian Homelands when we did our first homestead project. I think he brings a unique skill set of relationships with the community, as we've just heard, and relationships within the department, private expertise as a developer. And he's inheriting a great team and dedicated individuals with now they have the resources to get a lot of beneficiaries onto the land. I think he's the right man for the job. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Kipukai Kuoli'i, Vice Chair of Kauai County, support. Tasha Karma, Councilmember from Maui, support. Commissioner Pauline Namuol, in support. PBR Hawaiian Associates, in support. Imanaka Asanto, support. Wa'ohuli Hawaiian Homestead Association Incorporated, support. Hawaii Regional Council of Carpenters, in support. Waimea Hawaiian Homestead Association, support. Po'omanapono LLC, just saw walked in, in support. And he will be followed by Kalihii Palama Hawaiian Civic Club.
Hi, everybody, thank you. My name is Aikomana Ole, co-manager of Po'omanapono LLC. I just want to state that I'm not, I'm not in opposition of Kali, but I don't feel like my voice, my opinion would matter anyway if I came up here and said that I was in support of him, because it comes down to you five. What I am in support of, I'm just going to stand on my testimony that I'm in support of Kanaka. I'm going to let the rest of my time over to my husband.
Aloha. Aikomana Ole, and I'm here again to support the designated Chair, which is Kali Watson. And I gotta just say that, you know, great leaders, when you see them, because they surround themselves with Akamaika people. You know, Richard Hoke, I knew him when I first came into the criminal justice system. He was one of the hell of fine defense attorneys that everybody wanted to have on their team. So I wanted to give credit to him. Patty Tankayo is a good fellow friend of mine. And Molokai girl, she's solid. So if you look around to his team, he get one. He get on top-notch team with him. I was first, Kali's name first was brought to me when I was living in Nanakuli Homestead. I was married to my second wife at that time. That's my third wife. And I got word that they was going to come there and blast Kali for, you know, a lot of discrepancies that happened with Kamakana Ali. Makana Ali, right? They want a second rule. And so I heard that he was going to be verbally challenged there. So I came there and I did my thing as usual, because one thing I recognized about Kali from the very beginning is that this is one Kanaka that is putting Hawaiians in homes. And if you on Hawaiian, putting Hawaiians in homes, and that's what your purpose is, then I got to support you. You know what I mean? We can all talk what we like, but this guy doing on. Well, another guy that I see doing that, I can tell you from firsthand experience, Kurt Favella. I had a homeless guy where we were selling our food, and this guy needed one place for staying. We called Kurt, and Kurt said, "I meet you at 6 o'clock in Costco." The brother came, he got in a truck with Kurt. Unfortunately, the brother at the last minute said he going somewhere else. He not here with us today, he commit suicide. But I say that to show Kurt that Kurt and Kali, they share one similar passion, and that is to put Hawaiians in homes. You know what I mean? So we gotta like give the brother one try, because he doing it, and he been doing it. Thousands of Hawaiians was able to get into a home because of this guy.
Summarize.
Yeah, so I came to the Kupuna Council last week to ensure that my voice is heard to our people. Give the brother one chance. The brother get him, he get on solid team, and I think we can make it forward with this guy. Aloha.
Aloha.
And if not, we're going to reclaim more lands.
Kalihii Palama Hawaiian Civic Club, Juanita Brown, Kaumoro, in support. Kainalu Surf Shop LLC, in support. Hawaiian Homelands Community Association, Kauilani Almedia, President, of Support. PE Honua Hawaiian Homestead Community Association, in support. Hawaii Operating Engineers Industry Stabilization Fund PAC, in support. Mahailani Cipher, in support. Stanford Car Development, support. Keo Kaha Paneeva Farmers Association, support. Ivan Louis Kwan, in support. Mililani Trask, in support. Wilfredo Tongal Esquire, in support. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah. Oh, yes, hello, Ivan Louis Kwan. And he'll be followed by Wilfredo Tongal Esquire.
Aloha, my Chair Shimabukuro, Vice Chair for FALM, members of the Committee. My name is Ivan Louis Kwan. Mahalo, Nui, for giving me the opportunity to provide testimony support of Kali Watson, as Chair of the DHHL. Kali, as I said in my written testimony, Kali is highly qualified and well-prepared to do the duties of the Chair and the Director. He has developed an impressive reservoir of expertise as a real estate developer. I'm showing a long and successful career in developing real estate, starting from when he was a Director back in 1995, nearly 28 years ago. The other thing I've observed is that Kali has earned the trust of many beneficiaries of the Hawaiian Homelands Trust. For example, firsthand, I observed and seen him work with the beneficiaries in the development of the Nanakuli Village Center. Recent substantial development, working with Kamaki and the leaders out in the West Side, building a multi-purpose learning center, a 48-unit affordable rental housing complex, satellite clinic for the Hawaiian Coast Comprehensive Center and the Commercial Center. But most important, besides possessing the required technical expertise, I've known Kali a long time, and I can say that he's a very good person. He lives aloha, and he's honest. And so I ask that you please confirm Kali Watson. Mahalo, Nui, for allowing me to testify.
Thank you very much. Wilfredo Tongal Esquire, support. Kapua Maderos in opposition. I think she is online. Oh, she's here, okay, oh, yes. Thank you, thank you. Oh, okay. Oh, okay, I'll come back to Mililani Trask.
I'm Kapua Maderos from Waimea Manalo. I am in opposition of Kali Watson. And the reasons for my opposition are the fact that he has so much background that is questionable. Number one, someone died on his watch as the past DHHL Chair. That Kanaka felt so at his last wits end that he put himself in a position where his life was in danger. And it has been said that he committed suicide, but that is not true, because if that was true, then why would he care about trying to pay his bills? Also, his family did not inherit. So if Mr. Watson's idea is to get Kanaka in homes, then I believe that he would have took care of that Kanaka and made sure that his ohana and he's got to get that put back in the home. Number two, I showed up on the scene personally in Ma'iili'i and Kula'o'uni Street when Mr. Watson tried to put a hole through the canal of a major water estuary and called it a drainage canal, where he was planning to send raw runoff into that canal. And he told the neighbors that turtles don't belong in that place, though it is a major water estuary. And if you don't know what an estuary is, it is the place where the ocean and the fresh water meets. And in Ma'iili'i, that is the major water estuary. Right above there, there's a natural preservation area for birds. Number three, he is not only owns a nonprofit development company, but several other development companies for profit. And it bothers me, and it makes me wonder what the intentions and the motives that are going on in the background, especially of Governor Josh Green for electing such a person to sit as the DHHL Director. With all of this background, I believe that there are way better choices than Mr. Kali Watson. And I will stand on my position that Mr. Kali Watson is not the best choice for DHHL Director. We have a lot better choices that could have been made. So my name is Kapua Maderos. If you don't know me, I am from Waimea Manalo. I fight for what is Pono. I don't just say it, I make sure that that's for sure. And this is why I support also Senator Favella, because he also stands for what is Pono.
Please summarize.
Yeah, and I just wanted to give you all a little background of who I am, that I'm not just getting up here to say that Mr. Kali Watson may be a nice person, just like Ikaike Anderson. I was here for that too. And I saw the same people coming in and out to support Ikaike Anderson, and now they're back to support Kali Watson. And most of those people need government dollars to support their programs. Thank you. Aloha.
Thank you very much. Mililani Trask, in support.
Aloha, legislators. I filed this testimony and make this statement in behalf of myself and not in behalf of the Board of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. I've known Kali Watson for many, many years. We went together to school at Kamamea and graduated in 1969. But I never really had a chance to work with him until I became the Executive Director of the Gibson Foundation, a foundation that had received grant funds to assist Hawaiians in obtaining affordable housing. That was many, many years ago. During that time, I worked with the Department to assist over 200 families in obtaining small grants for the off-site costs, because they were too poor to afford putting in water lines and electricity, even though they could qualify for a small home. One of my first cases I took to his attention was a family of mother, father, and a little son that was not yet a teenager. They could only qualify for $60,000 to build a one-bedroom home, lift it up so that they could park a car and a boat beneath that structure, because they didn't have enough money to actually pay for a garage. I went to see Kali Watson. We both looked at the financials. He said, "This is going to be impossible." And I said to him, "Give this family a chance. I will work with them." They were so poor, they couldn't afford to even have the house be constructed. We bought it and hauled it in pieces in a nonprofit truck that I had gotten. We put up that one-bedroom home with the garage and the boat beneath it at Kauai High, where it is today, for under $60,000, because Kali Watson approved it. He knew it was a risk, but he also knew that the family and the nonprofit he was working with could do it. I support Kali without any reservation, and I'll tell you another thing about him. We don't always agree when we work together. That's a problem I have in my life. But when you work with Kali Watson, and you come to the point where there is no agreement, he is always the first to come forward and say, "Let's see what we can do working together to fashion another affordable solution." That is why I'm here. Thank you for receiving this testimony. Aloha.
Aloha. Thank you very much. Next, we have the Kingdom of Hawaiian Post Office, opposition. Okay, Osizu? Shelby? Aloha.
Man, I know hosted. I can't even see myself. I can see you guys, can you hear me?
Yes, we can see you, yeah, we can see and hear you, go ahead.
Okay, great. So I'm in opposition, because Kali Watson's going to out hustle all you guys. He is smarter than me when it comes to getting the bond financing, the corporate internet financing. They're already going to deal with Nani Maderos with Josh Green. So they're already pre-planned this. And Kali's a private developer. He's already got 13-plus LLCs, LPs, INCs. This guy is smart. Now, he's going to leverage the $600 million to get more bonds and finance, maybe 6 billion, who knows, 10% with the fractional reserve banking system. The problem is, how are you going to hold this guy accountable? Because according to my records, he's stealing all of the lands from the Royal Hawaiian Kingdom. The $600 million should go to the Hawaiian Kingdom. I don't see no receipt where DHHL in 1920 took over for whether it's the Republic of Hawaii, Territory Territory of or Hawaiian King. Because now we're talking about a load-earl title versus defeat, ease simple versus leasehold. If Kali plans to leasehold everything as a private developer, who's going to collect all of that cash flow? The private developers? Who's going to get the market appreciation? Who's going to collect the equity? Are you telling me if we make a brand-new 100-unit building, you charge guys $500 a month rent? That's cheap, so 500 times, you know, 100 units, who's going to collect all of that appreciation, depreciation, tax write-offs, monthly income, annual income? And they can just 1031 exchange and get a new building? Now, I cannot trust Kali Watson. When I look into the guy's eyes, I do not sense a soul. I sense a snake with cataracts. So when you guys have him sitting in front of you guys, I know you guys are Akamai, you can sense, you know, truth between BS. And then tell me what you guys see? When you look into his eyes, can you really trust this guy? According to the data, he sure already had this solution 20-plus years ago, right? DHHL was made in 1920. It's been 103 years. Why isn't there a database on Microsoft Excel for their 20,700 list? How come they can't file for family number one to build a hala? And if somebody wants to build a treehouse on the Royal Hawaiian Crown lands, where it's Ma'ona'keia, Ke'lawea, Molokai, who's to stop them from doing it, whether they're, you know, they have the royal bloodline or not? And that's why I'm in opposition, because he doesn't have a straightforward plan to you, me, or the younger generations. And he doesn't really care about the poor. He's only going to take care of people who's going to pay his bills. Thank you. Have a beautiful day.
Mahalo. Can I ask a question? I noticed you're not asking the testifier. You just got on testify. Yeah, we're going to have questions at the end of all the testifiers. So, yeah, yeah, so we may have questions. Thank you. Jermaine Myers, in support. Aloha.
Aloha, Chair. Aloha, Chairs, Senator Miley, Vice Chair Senator Favella, and Committee members. My name is Jermaine Myers. I am a Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead Lisi. I am in strong, strong support of Kali Watson's nomination for Chairman of the Hawaiian Homes Commission and Director of the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. I humbly ask you all to support and confirm his nomination. Kali Watson is highly qualified to lead, manage, and guide the Commission and the Department. I read this declaration from my personal experience. Senators, I reviewed the DHHL Annual Reports from 1994 to 1998 during Kali's tenure. I'd like to read the first two paragraphs of Kali Watson's letter to Governor Kayatano, dated December 1998, included with the 1998 annual DHHL report. My apologies. Honorable Benjamin J. Kayatano, Dear Governor Kayatano, It is with pride and sadness that I present my last DHHL Annual Report to you and members of the Hawaii State Legislature. This past year brings to an end a four-year journey that has been both exciting and gratifying. With your support and the support of an excellent DHHL staff, we have positioned the Department to enter the new millennium with vitality, promise, and vigor. With the passage of the $600 million state settlement, the 70 to 90 million federal land settlement, and the nearly completed transfer of 16,518 acres of excellent lands, the basic resources are now in place to move the program forward. During my tenure as a Director of DHHL, major strides have been taken, increasing the first four state settlement payments to $164.5 million, assisted in the accelerated development of over 3,100 new homesteads. More than at any time in the program's history, from Hanapepe Kalai to Paneeva Hawaii, homes for native Hawaiians are being built throughout the state. The state legislation and the use of federal laws never before accessed will now allow even more housing to be developed. 100 million in bond authorization, legislation allowing rentals and rent-only projects, use of federal community development block grants and home funds, as well as low-income housing tax credits will make a tremendous difference in the coming years. And it's made a difference in my own family's lives. I supported the Halemakana on Nanakuli rentals on DHHL land, because many Hawaiians are on the waitlist. If they cannot afford to buy a home, they're in a rental. My mother was one of them. She's 100% Native Hawaiian, raised on Nanakuli Homestead on Second Road, one of 14 siblings. Grandma's lot cannot be passed on to my mom and her 14 siblings and their children. In 2013, my mother stood in line for an application for Halemakana, and she moved into a one-bedroom, one-bath unit in December of 2013. My sister has been renting for all of her adult life. And she, for the last 10 years, she's paying $1,800 a month for a studio and a one-bath in Manoa Valley. Her studio, living room, dining room, and bedroom is half the size of my mom's living room. My sister's kitchen has a hot plate and a mini refrigerator. Senators, my mother's rent at Halemakana on Nanakuli is less than 3% of my sister's. Now, in 2023, my mother's rent has increased to 5% of my sister's $1,800 a month rent. Senators, I would be honored to take you to visit my mom's unit at Halemakana and to question her about her 10 years of experience living at Halemakana on Nanakuli. She loves the unit. Nanakuli Village Center, during COVID, Senator Favella, you've assisted Hawaiian Coast Community Foundation COVID outreach to Native Hawaiians at Nanakuli Village Center. You were also instrumental in supporting the Prince Kohio celebrations at Nanakuli Village Center, sponsored by WCCF. I'm at Nanakuli Village Center every week. I use Longstraw's drive-through prescription medication and shop there for other necessities. Two years ago, while at the hospital, my mom was placed on dialysis. Liberty Dialysis is in Nanakuli. She started off with wine night, and many a times I overslept trying to pick her up at 11 o'clock at night. But then she was transferred to Nanakuli, and in a few months, she was taken off of dialysis.
Summarize.
Thank you. My auntie is a Lisi at Nanakuli Homestead on Kealana Avenue. Her experience of dialysis at Kaizumo'ana Loa recently. I'm hoping for her to also go to Nanakuli Village so that my cousins will not be also taxed with taking her to dialysis. Halepono'i Replacement Home Project, 23 Native Hawaiians. Twenty-three Native Hawaiian families were assisted in building their homes by Kali Watson. My neighbor, two houses away from me, was one of them. I can go on and on and on about Kali and all that he has done in this and many other projects with only one person, Patty Barbie, doing all the work of Hawaiian Community Development Corporation. I support Kali Watson. I hope you will support him too. Mahalo.
Thanks so much, Ms. Myers. Okay, so next, we have Patty Barbie in support. And she'll be followed by Kahea Fariah.
I'll try not to get too emotional. Good afternoon, Senator Shimabukuru and Vice Chair Kurt Vavella and members of the board, members of the committee. My name is Patty Tankaio Farby, and I strongly support Kali Watson as the Director of the Department of Hawaii Homelands and the Chairman of Hawaii Homelands Commission. Kali exceeds the qualifications for this position. He is a visionary that will bring his experience, knowledge, and passion to this vital role for us. He understands the department's challenges. He has a demonstrated track record of finding solutions and has already returned thousands of Native Hawaiians to the homeland. From a Hawaiian lawyer fighting for Native Hawaiian rights to the, oh my gosh, to the past DHHL Director, to an affordable housing developer, there is no other person better for this job. And I'm grateful that he accepted Governor Green's nomination. I speak from a unique perspective, and I understand what qualifications are needed to be the leader of Hawaii Homelands. Because first of all, I'm a beneficiary. I was brought up on Hawaii Homelands on Wa'olehua and Molokai, and I'm on a waitlist. I know how it feels to be waiting thirty years on a list, because I'm on the list. I know how it feels to have uncles and aunties die on the list. And secondly, I've been in the affordable housing field for over thirty years. I've created programs with Danny May. I've conducted Self-Up Housing, Habitat for Humanity, single-family homes on Hawaii Homelands. And today, with Kali at Hawaii Homelands, I mean, I'm sorry, Hawaii Community Development Board, we've developed a commercial center, a rental project on Hawaii Homelands, and completed over five hundred units off of Hawaii Homelands, and we have another five hundred units in escrow. Hawaii Community Development Board is one of the top nonprofit developers in the state. I've known Kali for over twenty-five years. He has integrity and has a sincere desire to help the poorest Hawaiian families. Okay, I'm gonna go down. I'm gonna sum, okay. I'm genuinely excited for the future of the Native Hawaiian community with Kali at the helm. So if he becomes Chair, start ordering the Oo Sticks. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify in support of Kali Watson.
Mahalo. Thank you. Kahea Fariah, support. Lynn Akatsuka, support. Maryn Kapuniai in support. Dylan Armstrong in support. Myron Bromagen in support. Oh, he's here. And he'll be followed by William Oku. Myron, do you want to testify? Oh, he's always here. Sorry, my glasses on.
Senator Shimabukuru, Vice Chair Kurt Vavella, members of the committee. Myron Bromagen, the former principal at Nani Kapono Elementary School. Been there for about thirty-something odd years. After my retirement and during the time I was working, I had the opportunity to spend a good, a good time of my career working with Kali Watson and doing a lot of things, like the Boys and Girls Club there, like the center that we have there now in Nanakuli. Since my retirement, Kali and I have been working with U Challenge Foundation, which is located on the Big Island. We have one site there, and we have another one in Kalailoa. During this period of time that I've been associated with Kali, I've never ever, I've seen a lot of things that he does, and it comes from his heart. He's got a lot of, a lot of, a lot for people working with them and trying to get things done. And it's for those reasons that I support him, and I wish he would too. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. William Oku, support. KK, support. Michelle Brown, support. Erman Tankaio, support. Nani Peterson, I assume, with opposition. Kayleen Sheldon, opposition. Lori Akana, opposition. Julian, opposition. Shayla Hope, opposition. Joanna Howard, opposition. Juliana Tankaio, support. Shayna Dabis Tom, opposition. Penoya Kalani, Dabis Valentino, opposition. Shannon Rudolph, opposition. Jennifer Terry Potts, opposition. Nainoa Ho'opili, opposition. Lea Punahale, opposition. Lena Ala, opposition. Tony C, opposition. Tevita Apina Junior, opposition. Nolan Talit, opposition. Hooka Makani Nihi Poli, opposition. Ciara Perezza, opposition. Michelle Ingram, opposition. Rebecca Sandvik, opposition. Bronz Pono'i Moana, opposition. Shandell Dabis, opposition. Okay, okay. Francis Apolliona, support. Malia Marquez, opposition. Bo Kahui, support. Charlene Kahumoku, support. Don Aveo, support. Kamalani Kili Kuli, opposition. Sybil Lopez, support. Kama Hopkins, support. Leona Lealoa, opposition. Beverly Moore, support. Rosalyn Solomon, support. Nina Suzuki, support. Hawaii Community Lending and Hawaii Community Assets, support. Terry Lee Shibuya, support. Gerald Taber, opposition. Jessica Nakamura, support. Eke Nakea Development, support. Johnny Mae Perry, opposition. Friends of Wa'amanalo, support. Paul Shinkawa, support. Mary Ann Omerod, opposition. Annie Auhoon, support. Beverly Wee Samashima, support. Patrick Kahavi Ola'a, opposition. And then we have some walk-ins. There's three more walk-ins till you can see Louis. Okay, we've got Curtis Crabbe, support. And he will be followed by Leona Kalima. Aloha.
Good morning, Senators. Nice to be up here before you. My name is Curtis Crabbe. I live in Molokai. I'm a DHHL Lassie. My mom, she passed away. I got transferred. So I ended up on Molokai. I went there earlier, but I was asked my mom, how come you're half Hawaiian, how come you didn't apply for a homestead? You know, she's half Japanese and half Hawaiian, and you know, this thing over here, and she's from the Big Island, right, Senator, right? So we all conflicted. But anyway, I'm here to support Kali Watson. I'm, he's my client. Just recently, I knew Kali because he's a sixty-nine grad from Yama. He's my client. I'm an engineer. We're doing a consult for him. But I knew, I thoroughly searched everybody before we, any customers nowadays, because the last thing I want to do is get into debt collections or some, something that can go awry nowadays. But Senator Vavella, after, on my way here, I listened to Catherine Cruz, and you gave her or who, she issued four hundred pages of dirt on Kali Watson. I haven't achieved that yet in any discovery, but I want to tell you, I look in Kali's eyes. Hey, I see clarity. He's straight up. And I don't think there's any, you know, brunt over there, maybe a little spook, but that's okay. You know, we're all different, right? We're too sensitive nowadays, right? So we have to take everybody. Kali is one of my best customers. His partner has paid the bills on time. And we're, and that's it. And that thing about not paying a bill in two thousand eighteen, Senator. We're in business. Horatio and Horace Crabbe were my great-grandfather, great-granduncle. They came, they took a risk. They came from Pennsylvania, had a ship. It wasn't a lollipop either. It was a brigadier or whatever it was. They brought over fabric. They did the trade. They took over whale oil and rum back. So they were in business. My grandpa, George Crabbe, that was his son. He was in the Department of Sanitation in Hilo. He had a government job, the only crab that had a government job ever, okay? His kids, four of them, independent, worked. George Crabbe was Hawaiian Airlines many years. My dad, electrician, Akamai Electric, I'm Akamai. He's iconic. I'm Akamai Electric. My son Kaylee is Akamai Energy. Kali Howard, Kali Howard Enterprises, Kali Howard Enterprises. We're all in business.
Please summarize too.
We don't sit around and watch things happen, okay? I don't have a pension that's going to be maybe as big as yours is. I don't know about the triple-dipping, whatever it is we heard back in the Tuukidi's. But we're in business. We make things happen. Kali makes things happen. Avalon is too weird. It was all the things wrong with the department. Did you want to call the department between twelve and one o'clock? You're going to listen to Blue Hawaiian Moonlight for one hour? I sat down with Poa and I guess Chino, but there's, you know, Mr. Anderson's assistance, and they knew about it, you see? But there's short one hundred and twenty people. Broda, are you here, the one who graded the land someplace in Molokai?
Yes, right there.
Yeah. He took it in his hands. See, whatever, Bumpy got five acres, whatever he got, right? Yeah. He took it. I don't know why the department doesn't lease lands and charge rents to get Hawaiians back on our land. Mr. Kilo Haloli, that's a Hawaiian name. I'm Crabbe. I'm a white Hawaiian. We shared, we ate, we chili, yeah, that's what we got, yeah? That's my moku. You got it. So anyway, Kali, straight up, I just want to give my support. I'm not going to go through my laundry. Listen. Senator, I've got to hand it to you, you know, I'm the true alma Crab syndrome. Okay, Kali's on top. You got to let him vote. Because no matter how you vote, the people here, we support him. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, brother.
Leona Kalima in support.
I never liked to mention my name.
And she'll be followed by Makayel Villanueva.
So they know the big guns have come. Okay, I have reservations about Kali, but that's my reservations. And we will talk about him, okay? In fact, I embraced him this morning, and so I'm here for his support. And I want him to help me with my Kalima case, because the bookkeeping at DHHL is atrocious. What I understand, my daughters. So we'll be working with him. Okay, part of the stuff that I want to hear from these guys is like, why? I see, I see a lot of opposition, and I really heard that a non-Hawaiian made a statement about my Hawaiian brother. But, Kali, we were at the time where my house was made, and you came over for the blessing. And my daughter took the house from her dad. My daughter passed last year. Thank God she got to live in her dad's property. Okay, and he was on the list forever. So we got back to settle. We've got to get to that waitlist, okay? Abercrombie took three hundred million dollars, okay, along with who is Lingo, okay? These guys took money and, oh man, I don't even want to go there with Micah, okay, and Wahiti, okay? Now, part of this stuff, if you're going to wonder why and where we're going to get the money to update, support, and do our Hawaiian homestead, I got you an answer. Lotto tickets! Now, if we're entertaining gambling, yeah, of whether it be convention center or where China Park, I sent for Lotto tickets, gang, and I put in my money. And I watched when that billion dollars get taken, okay? And I'm happy for it. I'm happy for Hawaii. Hawaii had gambling before. And I won't go on like forever on that either, because I couldn't make it on Tuesday. And there was something about adoption on Tuesdays and stuff. And I called in. I gave my consent. I was adopted, and that was my problem for the Kalima case. I couldn't prove I was Hawaiian. So now, today, adoption records are open because several of us went to length, testified, went to Congress when they came here for the Father Bush Tax Force, and we made it a point that Hawaiians that are adopted move their lineage, because only, only Hawaiians can do this. I'm sixty-two point five percent Hawaiian, twenty-five percent Portuguese, twelve point five percent Japanese, raised by my popo Anamu. Okay, so that's how we are here. Yeah, we mix. But man, I'll, I'll damn if somebody going to take my place on that list. That's Hawaii than me.
Please summarize.
Yeah. So anyway, Kali, welcome to the job. I'll be there. We'll talk about the Kalima case, because the check is in the mail in July, okay? And I'm going to tell you something. There will be leftover money, and we're going to solve that problem, Kali. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And also, polls can see me outside.
Makayel Villanueva, opposition, and he's followed by Elias Hope.
Aloha, Kaua. A color mine for my little disclaimer here. Ovaunoa Makayel Villanueva. Hekikioka'ailina aloha o'ua'ua oahu. Enohone au me, ah, way annai me ku'ohana. In my testimony here today, I represent myself, a non-beneficiary, and my wahine, Regina Peterson, who's been on the waitlist since at least nineteen ninety-three. My wahine and I actively participate in this civic engagement under protest of the illegal occupation of the Hawaiian Kingdom and duress brought on by the usurpation of sovereignty stemming from the Fake State Hoods and Mission Act. With that, we recognize that the decisions here made in this quasi-governmental process do have effective control, however illegal within the paeina. We cockle all of the previous testimonies that were so passionately and eloquently shared in opposition to Kali Watson's appropriation. Forgive me again, like this, this might, my preamble is stuff that you guys already know, and your guys' decisions often reflect. As Senator Ihara emphasized in the last hearing, DHHL is different. It is part of the state of Hawaii's trust obligations to Hawaiians. And this means that the senators and this committee, as representatives of the state, have a fiduciary duty to the benefits of the HHC Act. You have a fiduciary duty to the beneficiaries to conduct due diligence, which is my main concern today into the nominee for DHHL, especially into the serious matters concerning conflicts of interest with this candidate. And unfortunately, that simply can't be done or achieved in just one hearing. To proceed with a vote today without performing the requisite due diligence and investigating those conflicts of interest is a failure of your fiduciary duty, no offense to you guys, and thereby a violation of your trust obligations. I will say, though, that I am very pleased with Kali Watson's acceptance of the kupuna at Uluke Kukue. That was from my kali. And to hear some of the testimonies that were shared today as to his character is, was very nice to hear. However, I do oppose his appointment until the due diligence results concerning the conflict of interest are released by this committee. Any Chair of the HHC and Director of DHHL as a nominee should have a good faith obligation and fiduciary duty, not only to the beneficiaries but the paeina. Since Kali Watson left DHHL, his nonprofit Hawaiian Community Development Board has both leased and developed DHHL lands and used beneficiary assets like state, federal funding entitlements, as an example.
Please summarize.
Yeah. So Kali Watson has chosen, like, companies, right? And I would, I would ask that he fully disclose like his direct and indirect salaries or equity interests from all of those corporations that engaged with, directly with DHHL or use any beneficiary assets. The details of those transactions, the revenues, incomes. The details of those transactions, the revenues, incomes, and how much Kali Watson profited personally. Um. His conduct suggests that he may have been less than forthright in honoring those obligations, not as questions of law, but rather as ethical and moral obligations. This speaks to the character of a potential future Chair of um, uh, the Director. Um, I will s- just, I will just say that I would um, love to submit it. Uh, Niko, uh, Lehu, uh, Kinilau, Keno, um, as DHHL Chair. Mahalo.
Elias Ho, um, opposition? Kapua kili kaukamai, support?
Elias last Tuesday.
Oh, okay, oh yes, sorry, yes, Elias Ho? Opposition?
Hi. Aloha.
Aloha. Aloha.
Aloha, Makayel Ho. Aloha. Aula ka'akua. Ikiaka'akua. Te'ahala. Ote'ahala. Bye, mahalo.
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 Thank you, very brave, very brave, very brave. Uh, kapua kili kaukamai, um, support? Um, along with Ka'ili, kili kaukamai. Right, and she'll be followed by Sabrina Grace. Aloha.
Aloha. Ova'ukapua kili kaukamai no ka'a'nahu opulupula ka'ava'ava'awaina mai'au. I wanna thank you for this opportunity to share with you today. Um, I do support Kali Watson for our Director. I have reservations. Some of which you've heard, I think you're gonna hear more shortly after me. I think they all need to be seriously, deeply considered. I think the time that we put between this uh, advice and consent confirmation, uh, approval. And when he actually goes to the floor. I ask that you folks give some time for some of those um, research to occur in a short period. Um, I support him, he can do the job, he's done the job. I have the reservations. But what I really wanna thank you folks for also is for the fortitude that you folks showed. When you did not approve. The advising consent for Ikaika Anderson. I'm seriously concerned about his presence at my department. Because here is a man who the next day withdrew his application. So when you withdraw your application from a position, you shouldn't be there because you stated so. So the fact that he says, I'll stay until the Director is approved. If we go through this, maybe one more time, within this legislative session. We don't know if we'll still get the right candidate. I don't know who the governor is asking, seeking for this, but maybe he should be coming to the homesteads. Maybe he should be having a meeting with the waitlisters. He should be talking to the people that it affects. I'm offended. That my Department of Hawaiian Homelands, our Hawaiian Homes Commission Act, our Hawaiian Homelands. Us beneficiaries are being used as political gains. Especially this significant time, when we have six hundred million dollars at stake. Thank you to Act Two Seventy-Nine, I wanna thank you all for that. But there's too much at stake for us to keep playing this, going through this game here. Kali's done it. As you've heard, there's reservations because he's such a great businessman. But it is because of that greatness. That we know he can do a good job. And I'll save the time for the rest of you. I thank you folks greatly, mahalo for your fortitude.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ka'ili, kili kaukamai in support? You stand on your testimony or? Or, or? Good? Okay. All right. Sabrina Grace, opposition? And she'll be followed by Iokepa Kalulo Kaeo.
Good afternoon, I'm Sabrina Grace, I'm here in my mom's memory, Molly Grace. My mother was so proud to be a Hawaiian. Whenever we went to America, to the mainland, held everybody, she's Hawaiian, she's not Mexican. She wants to share her heritage. I oppose Mr. Watson because of his conflict of interest. And everybody that sit in this room. I know. Everybody know.
Please, please address us.
Okay. Everybody know. We need one audit. Everybody that sit there and sit in the back of me know. They get too much corruption in Hawaiians.
Ew.
I spent twenty-five years of my adult life. Let me finish, like you did everybody else. Helping a federal government turn into drug dealers. I sit down across to the prosecutors and the agents and I tell them. Why are we catching up crooks in our building? In DHHL? License for steal. Hawaiian Homes is a trust. Like Bishop Estate. It's supposed to be managed correctly. For the Hawaiian people, it's not being managed correctly. Everybody taking, taking, taking. This six hundred million dollars, I wake up a lot of people's eyes, yeah? All of a sudden, everybody did two things. Attorneys come, developers come. But where is six hundred million dollars going? I hope it's going to the people. But I would expect you as my senator. Write a letter to the Department of Interior and get an audit. We need an audit. We don't need hearings to put the right first idiot, get plenty of good people, Mr. Miluula is one. Mr. Cavalli is one. Put somebody with no personal interests. No entity should be prospering, like the Nanakuli Village. That money should go back to DHHL to put people in houses, to help the kupuna fix their house. So say deny. Okay? So I am expecting you to vote, no? Be for the people, mind me. Not for the politics. You told me yesterday, the governor. Wants Kali, you don't work for the governor. You work for the people out there, why not?
Ew.
Okay? So I expect you, and I humbly ask you, and you, do the right thing. Get the audit, be for the people, or we're gonna be fifty years down the road. We're not gonna be here, bigger problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Iokepa Kalulo Kaeo, opposition? And he'll be followed by Kanakili Kaua.
Aloha, Kaua. Ah, so, strongly, strongly oppose any more confirmation of any more new chairs. Or whatever Senate approvals you guys are trying to s- slide down our throats. The beneficiaries, the waitlisters of Moko Ke'ave Beneficiary Trust Council. Have voted unanimously to demand an audit. Over a hundred years of breach of trust. And you guys are not gonna slide any more chairs down our throat. You guys are gonna be giving us visas to our commercial properties. You guys are not gonna squeeze us out of rentals. Moko Ke'ave demands, aina ho'opula'upula. We don't, we don't want these rentals you guys are discussing. It may fit Honolulu. It may fit Maui. But it's not gonna fit us. And so whatever decisions you guys make here, just like how you guys have slight island down on us for eight years. I support Uncle Pat. And everything that we have been through with, with this chair that you guys are recycling. You guys are recycling an old chair on us. I don't even know him, but I know what he did for our water issues in Pani'eva when he arrested our kupuna and makua's. We know the houses that we see in Ke'okaha, in Pani'eva, that are exactly what you guys are proposing on us now. This is a piece of kukai. And then now, we gotta leave our families to come up here and tell you guys that, yeah, you guys are gonna rubber stamp this guy. But we also ready to start with the process of section one oh one with self-governance and self-determination. And there should be no third party intervenes. No governors, no Senate, no lettuce, no legislations should be infringing on our rights that you guys have failed. The Admissions Act, you guys have broken that compact. We have twenty-eight thousands and counting, numerous that have passed away, like Auntie Kalima's case have, have showed. You guys, lack of documentations that you guys are supposed to be having on record, shows a clear bre- breach of trust. These are things PTSD that our kupuna are going through now, our makua are continuing to live. And now you sliding this on to the third, fourth generations. Just like Mauna Ke'ana Access Road, Isla wants to say they own it, they wanna liquidate that off. You guys wanna make nonprofits for other ventures, that's not for beneficiaries. What would Principal Hill do when he see, i- if he were here seeing this?
Please summarize.
Strongly oppose, and you guys are gonna run it down, shake your guys head, yes, yes, yes. But that's how you guys conduct and treat us. We gotta come out here and strongly oppose. You guys don't tell the other lady who didn't strongly um, support, she's talking for four or five minutes. You never tell her, wrap it up. But you guys gonna tell the waitlisters, wrap it up, right? Why, why, why is there so much discrimination on us waitlisters? We know more. There's only two classes. Rich and poor. What comes next? A revolution? Why? Cuz we have nothing. You guys are pricing us out, you guys are breaching the trust. You guys look sincere, but I know you guys not. You guys are really trying to give me the island treatment, wrap it up, two minutes. And that's all I got to say, that's how you guys treat us. We'll see you guys on Mauna Ke'aa, the next Poha'Kulu'ua. And our lease. If, if this is the guy. That's, that is gonna lead us into the future, my kids. My makua's. If you gonna lead us into the future, give us the lease. Give us the aina. No, 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 this is the guy. You guys not the guy, this is the guy. He get our life in his, mama's hand, right now. He's gonna decide if my kids will benefit, which my parents didn't, didn't benefit. My grandparents never benefit. And now, I get to see this person, I don't even know him. But I know his track history. Our kupunas are still reliving the PTSD. But I wanna ask him, when are we gonna meet, the BTC, to handle these issues? Cuz I know they gonna put you in. And that's why I'm asking you. Kanaka to, uh, kanaka to kanaka. When we gonna have this serious conversation? Strongly oppose, let's get it done, stamp them off, book the meeting, we'll be ready.
Thank you so much. Kanakili Kaua. Mahalo.
Aloha to each and every one of you, I know today has been a hard, difficult day, not only today, but each time that a hearing is made. Especially when it comes to a choice of a position as important as this. Our Chairman, our Director for the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. Today, you've heard many that are in support and in opposition, and we have our own reasons as to what it may be. For myself, I stand in support of Kali Watson. I want that to be known, though the reservations may be here. Um, I, I, I do believe that sometimes we have no choice. The choice is made up not by the people. It's made up by our legislative body. And when we come and we come forth and we bring our hearts to you, you have to take this home with you. You have to decide and partner into what is the best decision for the people of Hawaii. Not only here on our land, but even in the continent. Because we have our Hawaiians that are still there wanting to come home, is there something to come home to? When we don't have enough homes for our people to come to, affordable homes for our people to come to. I know Kali has built a lot. And our, our, our Nanakuli Village has given us much hope for our kupuna. And we need more housing like that. We need really more affordable housing for our people. And it's so hard for us to understand all the politics and the gains that there may be. And we know that people, there's, there's livelihoods they have to make, whether they have fifty nonprofits or not. That's their livelihood. But what are we gonna do today? The decisions that need to be made today. That we leave in your hands. You know, sometimes as our kanaka, as beneficiaries, we feel the people should make the decision. The Chairman may be in conflict because his answer is to the Governor and not to the beneficiaries. So it really, the, the, there's not a real balance to that. So today, again, I, I leave, and I know that it's a hard decision for you. But I'm hoping that like for me, you've gotta seek. You've gotta have that transfer, you have to have that integrity. We, and sometimes we lo- we've lost integrity in the purpose of what we do, in the positions of where we stand. But it's only between you and man and you and God. So today I leave you, and I just wanna continue to bless you. And all those that come forth to want this position, it's not an easy position. It's not an easy position. You can't please everyone. You can only do the best that you can do with what you have. And I believe Kali has been doing that, he has a team, he has expertise, he's shown that. Jermaine has, has read that report. All we can go by is what we know. Brother, before me, he doesn't know this man. We won't know until we put people to the test. And we're just hoping that this test is successful for us, the beneficiaries here. Mahalo, thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all that I've had that's signed up, is there anyone else here to testify? Okay, yes, oh yes, please come forward, sorry if I missed you, Mike Kahikina, maybe I see. Yes, and then you go, yes, it's in the back Rocky? Yeah. Yes, thank you, Mike.
Mike Kahikina, Chairman of the Association of Hawaiians for Homeless and the Waitlist. And uh, also a beneficiary in Nanakuli. And I'm here to, personally to support Kali Watson's uh, nomination. And as the former speaker is saying that, we do have choice. And my choice is that all the accolades that you, you heard before and the achievement, all belongs to God. All belongs to God. We talk about God, but we all get different interpretations. I knew Kali from when I was in the house. In fact, we did a lot of things together. And um, I'm here to bear witness that my association have uh, gonna be there. The guy's like holding to his, his promises. And I believe that he know how to get us into colonization and has brought from Big Island, Big Island don't wanna get colonized. They want the true Hawaiian Home Said Act, the real attention back to fish and squid. And that means not what we're talking about right now, see? The paradigm gotta change. And as I shared many times, the heart, looking feeling this square called democracy, exactly what's never meant to be. And who's responsible? It's our people, cuz that's the, that's the beneficiaries. You know, you should always tell me, maybe when I was in office with Washington, he said, when are the Hawaiians gonna act like the Indians? I could never figure it out. But now we do because on two thousand and eight, our association got registered in the Department of Interior on the forty-three ECF or forty-seven point one. And recognized as a Muslim Association, likened to the competition of the native last, likened to the tribe. And then, I'm not kidding, all of them, not tribes, not Indians. But they don't play policy. And I'm witness that, you actually reading, because I believe that our constitution needs some recon- reconstruction of the constitution. It was never meant that this Hawaiian homes be associated with the state. Cuz it was created as a temporary. But until when the beneficiaries, and we are getting smart now. So as colonization, I believe you got a good choice. Uh-huh, yeah, no good choice, we. It has been the beneficiaries.
Thank you very much. Rocky Kalu'iva? Aloha.
Aloha, Makayel Ko, Chair, Co-Chair, members of the committee. My name is Le'aleha Rocky Kalu'iva. You have a written testimony in front of you in favor of Kali Watson. But I'm also gonna wear many hats in our community. Today, I'm gonna speak for the Kola Pokumoku. And I will be representing the Kola Foundation and the Kola Poku Hawaiian City Club. In nineteen ninety-seven, um, Kali Watson was the Chair of the Hawaiian Homelands. Haiku Valley was placed in the hands of the Hawaiian Homelands, along with Yellin' Ar and some other um, landowners. Kali was working tremendously, so well with the community. Were into making some kind of memorandum of agreement, some kind of lease. And then all of a sudden, he was not there, the people couldn't. And then all of a sudden, he was not there, the people couldn't understand, then we found out that Kali was ousted. But since then, I'll tell you, since nineteen ninety seven, all of the other administrators. When the government gave that property back, which was the Omega Station, only seven in the world. There was an Omega Station, it was pristine, you could have walked right in and had an office in there. Our intentions for the whole community was to make it into a museum, not only for the Hawaiian people. Building the H G, they got all our EVs still packed up in there somewhere, but we wanted to bring it back to the museum, but it's also to the world. Cause it was important to the military, you look at it today, I wanna cry when I see it. My, my nephew came back from the Big Island, he was stationed there and was given to the um, commune, given back to H. Hawaiian Homelands in charge of it, he looked at it, he couldn't believe it, because it was stationed there. It's decapitated, the walls are all taken apart, all of the copper, everything taken out of there. Kali has a job unfinished with our community, and I support him and I give him credit, I commend him for coming back to the plate. And I, I, I asked you, you put Kali back to help our community, mahalo.
Mahalo, mahalo. I'm sorry, wait me one of the next, uh, whoever was it, oh yeah, okay, I can, Gina, Nani Peterson, they called you, and then we'll line up. Okay, pick you in the green, then yeah.
Aloha Makako.
Aloha.
Ova o nani, no way, and I mayow, Regina Peterson is my common name. Um, as a Hawaiian Homeland Beneficiary, I and all beneficiaries deserve a nominee. That can fulfill their good faith obligations and fiduciary duties to all beneficiaries. I didn't know anything about Kali Watson, um, until the YNI Kupuna Council had, um. Worked so hard to put people that's houseless in that facility over at Uluke Kukui, and that's when I found out about Kali. And that's when I found out that he um, has ties to the organization that's running that shelter. As well as ties to the development, um, company. Uh, and it made me feel a certain way. Um, because to me, that's a big conflict of interest. Um, there are other reasons why I am in opposition as of right now for um, Kali Watson. Uh, to be appointed to this position. Um, but there's one that holds heavy to my heart that I found out, that I never knew about. Um, and I'd like to share that with you folks. Um, under Kali Watson's previous stewardship of DHHL, a Hawaiian man. Hilbert Clarence Kohale Lehuas Smith died. Again, I repeat, a Hawaiian died. No Hawaiian deserves to die for reasons such as what happened with Kohale Smith, period, yeah. Um, I heard about the, the situation with his fault. Uh, lease payments, his rent payments, and I wondered like, why wasn't anybody hounding him? Or giving him the same treatment that he and DHHL, DHHL staff gave to Kohale Smith during that time? Where did DHHL stand in that position? And I think that was extremely wrong, I, I found out that he just recently paid those bills. Um, prior to nomination. Um, the circumstances surrounding Kohale Smith's death strongly suggest misconduct. Harassment and mouth, mouth visits by Kali Watson and DHHL. Hawaii's penal statutes clearly link conduct to causation. Alright, Hawaii HRS seven oh four, seven oh two, two and four, casual relationships between conduct and result. Conduct is the cause of result when it is an antecedent. But for which the result in question would not have occurred. Beneficiaries have the right to know if Kali Watson, DHHL staff's conduct caused Kohale Smith's death. I request of the senators of this committee on behalf of the Hawaiians, on behalf of the beneficiaries, and on behalf of the justice of Kohale, Kohale Smith. To make a formal written request to Attorney General Lopez and US Attorney Claire Connors. To reopen this case for criminal investigation, and that this committee withholds this confirmation of Kali Watson. Until the completion of that investigation. Presumably nominee Watson, in accordance with his good faith obligation and his fiduciary duties to beneficiaries. Will both support me in this cause, in this request for justice. And endorse beneficiaries' right to know if DHHL staff's conduct caused the beneficiaries' death. You can do that, that would be one good thing that you could do. I'm asking the Chair to make the commitment right here, right now, on behalf of the Hawaiians and the beneficiaries, to submit this request. To the state and federal law enforcement to investigate if the cause of this beneficiary's death, Kohale Smith, was criminal under the law. Every Hawaiian and any, every beneficiary deserves a right to know. So if this committee needs to recess to make this commitment as a collective, we should do that right now. Right now, Chair. Um, justice for this Hawaiian Kohale Smith has waited for almost thirty years. And I'm sure that the lahu, we won't mind another five minutes in waiting for your decision. You should recess and talk about this, this is super important for our people. Yeah, no other Hawaiian should deserve to die under his watch, mahalo.
Mahalo. Yeah, oh, hello, is that Laura? Yes, okay, okay, oh yeah, then I'll get to Craig, yeah, and then to Bo. Hello, hi Laura.
Aloha, Chair, Members of the Committee, Laura Ka'aku, Deputy Director for DLNR. Uh, Chair Chang would have liked to be here to support Mr. Watson in person. But is working on Hawaii Island today, so I just wanted to be here on her behalf. And on behalf of the department to share our support for Mr. Watson in this position, mahalo.
Mahalo. Okay, I think I'll go with Bo Kahui, next, is Bo still here? If not, Officer Wutasi?
Yes, thank you. Hello, the senators, I'm Craig Wutasi, I'm President of Mark Development. We're a local affordable housing developer and property manager since nineteen seventy seven. And thirty years ago or so, I had the privilege and honor of being the first private developer to build on Hawaiian homelands. At Princess Kahano Estates. Since then, I've had the opportunity to work with many chairs from Holy Kudraiken on. I've seen good ones and bad ones, and I even got to develop homes for, under Kali Watson, uh, when he was Chair of the First Romeo. And uh. Kali was a good chair, but you know, I would always, I had issues and would argue with him on different things. He was a lawyer, trying to do a very big job, that, that is the job of the chair. But he didn't really understand the pain and suffering that developers go through, the bureaucracies that we deal with and all the nuances. After he left his uh, position as DHHL Chair, he wanted to continue to help try and put Hawaiians into homes, and he had to walk in those shoes. And uh, in full disclosure, I, I've, I work with him and Hawaii Community Development Authority right now, or Development Board. Uh, we're co-developing some projects on Kauai, um, I manage many of their properties. So I've gotten to see Kali. Learn and grow, and he is going to be, he was a good chair first time. He's gonna be outstanding this next time around, because he really understands now. The things that you need to do to build the homes, to get the people into the land, so. For whatever it's worth, that I have actually done the job for Hawaiian homelands. That I've actually worked with a number of different chairs, I can stand here and tell you that Kali Watson. Must be out of his mind to go and do this again.
Yeah.
But, but take him while he's crazy. So, that, that's all, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wutasi. Anyone else to testify? Oh yes, who is it?
Aloha.
Aloha.
My name is Ka'ivon Mioski, I'm speaking in support and possibly some reservation for Kali Watson. First, I wanna stand on the testimony of Patty Barbie. Of her testimony, Sherry O'Paula, of his experiences. Second, I wanna speak of a, a project that really inspired me, that he engaged with. He wanted to, and he did, to rehabilitate existing homes on several. Communities on Hawaiian homestead, because those homes and those residents, those homes were so. Not, you could not live on it, but he went out to seek funding, to just to build. A new home or to repair a home, that's all he went in for. However, there are other circumstances, but what inspired me was his ability to listen. To some of the experts that re- that required the wraparound services. To help these individuals of all ages of those less seeds. The homes that he had to fix, right Kali, you remember that? Were so awful, old, old homes, kupuna, extended family, multi-generation. He went out of his way, just thinking with the thought of just putting new walls for these less seeds. Who could not afford to, to, to uh, help improve their homes. But he came up, and he only had the intention of fixing the four wall. But other issues came about, and what inspired me was his ability to hear and listen. To other service programs and to tell him, it's more than just housing. It's not his career, it's not the department's job to do the self, the wraparound services, you know that. You all folks know that, for housing, it's more than just four wall, but he. Came with open heart and open ears, and did what he did, and now if you go back to all those two hundred homes, just on this island. They were helped, truly helped, because he had open arms, open ears to listen to everybody at the table. So I commend you for that part, I was there. I, I agree, I commend you, because that was the first time ever experience of anybody doing such a bold thing like that. Now we have to continue, he set the trademark for that, we have to do multiple things like that, second.
Please summarize.
Second, the commissioners that were doing your time. You know them, I know one particular one. You know their wisdom, that you had to sit at the commission table, I know you had. I didn't hear that one commissioner who happens to be my father. I didn't hear any complaint coming out, and they knew that they had a challenge to put these hot people on the property. I didn't hear the commissioners, you know who they were. Mommy, Kaula Kukui, Rocky Freitas. Mary of East Hawaii, my father, West Hawaii, they did as best as they could under his leadership. As Chair of that time, could they do everything possible? Impossible job, it's an impossible job for you folks, impossible job, it's a very complex issue, folks. Right now you have a decision to bring this man on, because of his experience, and I heard Mark. He now comes in with the past experience as a Chair, and. A, a person coming in as a developer, now he knows the two sides. What person comes in with that, what opportunity do you have at this table? That comes with both sides representing the department and as a personal developer. He knows, you know the red tapes that goes along, so I ask for your, your support to, to support him as the next Chair.
Mahalo, is there anyone else here to testify on this GM? Okay, seeing none, members, any questions of the testifiers? Okay, of the testifiers, okay.
Patty. Aloha.
Now before I start my questioning, so I can let everybody know in the room, because that's the tension and that's the stuff I getting. I'm not gonna say the person's name, they're in the building, they made a threat to my client, my uh, one of my staff, I didn't take it lightly. Kali, I never did hate you, I don't have anything against you, I just gonna do the documents, and also I work. Again, that's the reason why I'm asking Patty Turiya. The back when we had this thing called keep Hawaiian lands in Hawaiian hands. You remember who was the members of the keep Hawaiian lands in Hawaiian hands? Besides you was a consultant and um, Sabrina Grease, you remember who was the members of the? Keep Hawaiian lands in Hawaiian hands, president at that time was your son Killki, vice president was Stacy Eli. I thought my wife was one of the um, um, people, and then uh. When it was going forward, there was a con- concern um, by certain families that um. There was going in the wrong way, so how this all started was because, and the young people of Nanakuli. At the time was against Nanakuli Village, because there was not gonna be all for Hawaiians. And that's why we had a meeting at uh, Nani Kapono, where Kali was there, Kamake. God rest his soul Kimo, and the rest of the homestead, are people that was there. So the topic was, they wanted to have on board, because of all the homesteaders that was against the project. But it's not, now they like them, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying they don't like them now, but at the time, Patty. Uh, you and Sabrina and some other community members had asked and had was involved with it, at the time. The Nanakuli Board and as you as the time when you was in the association that you had designed, the Nanakuli Neighborhood Board. Was also uh, against the project, at the Nanakuli Home, Home, Nanakuli Neighborhood Board. Because I used to come to those boards with, uh, to uh, support you, and that's how I got involved, and that's how my wife got involved, so. And yes, share that, I mean, I know you have a different place now, but I just wanna let people know. How long we've been working together and doing these things that we know. Um, not all the time is great to testify for or against, but I'd like to elaborate on that, is that, if any of that that I had spoken. That we was trying to stop the project, keep Hawaiian lands in Hawaiian hands, was because, was gonna have non-beneficiary. And non-Hawaians being op- uh, an opportunity to apply for this. And I, and I know what they said at the meeting, but I just wanna, I just want you to um, to elaborate and try explaining to us at the time, not now. Cause I understand your, your stance had difference, but at that time, was that, is that correct, that you was in the same way at that time?
Okay, so thank you for that, um, Senator, so at that time, when the forty-eight units of Nanakuli Hale Makana was being built. Not only myself, but you had a lot of opposition within the community, we, we, we weren't educated about the facility. You need to understand that, it was on, and it is on Department of Hawaiian Homelands. And because of the funding uh, that was allocated to Mr. Watson and his um, company to build this facility. We're concerned whether we're having non-Hawaians on DHHL lands, and you would be as a beneficiary. So um, as a project went forward, I think the community did educate ourselves and we embraced that facility. As it, um, more Hawaiians were in that facility to today, we have. So much percentage of native Hawaiians that reside there, there is a long waiting list of native Hawaiians, but you know. Like any project that moves forward, if you don't educate yourself, then you wouldn't know, and, and thank you for that question, um, for, you know, Senator. But today it is a very good project in Nanakuli, there's a very long waiting list, we, we embrace that. But yes, at that time, we didn't understand, we were young and naive and we just didn't, but um. The community worked together to resolve that and move forward to that, so I hope that kinda answer uh, your question on that.
The reason why I say that, because at that time, where the project was gonna be built, not so much on the. A Butler building area, but so much on the homestead area that would have been um, able to assist um. In having more homestead uh, lots be built, I'm going forward, I understand that because he took the funding. Supposedly federal funding, he cannot discriminate, which we understood that, but right now, there's, there's not, not all of the people that living there. Um, is uh, fifty percent or, or more, we do have Hawaiians there, and don't get me wrong. We should be putting them, but the priority of homestead land, and Principal Hill, and you know that, we worked with each other a long time. Is to put beneficiaries, fifty percenters, on land, and that's the concern that was keep bringing, I mean, don't get me wrong. I love Wendy's, you know, Pizza Hut and all that, I, I love lawns.
You know, and I appreciate your question, Senator Fafella, because you're very active in our community, we appreciate you. You have helped with the COVID programs where we're involved, we work together in making, in bringing native Hawaiians, our beneficiaries together to bring. in bringing native Hawaiians, our beneficiaries together to bring a successful event. And we thank you because you, you, you're there. You bring with, with the toilets and whatever we need and, um, you know, other facilities into the Nanakuli Village. Today we have the Nanakuli Village. It is a Pico area where beneficiaries can gather and have events together. Um, it's a, it's a, we showcase this area. We have very good eateries that can help our communities. Our kupunas don't have to even catch the bus. They can walk from first, second, sixth road all the way down to, to use the facilities. So it is a gathering place that, um, it's on Department of Hawaiian Homelands. And on the other hand, as a commissioner, we're looking at that kind of pilot program in every island that we can have, a gathering place for beneficiaries to gather, live, work, and play there. So, but thank you for your service to our community of Nanakuli, um, Senator Favela.
Thank you. So the, the concern was that is, was there so much already how the project gone? The problem was, um, Patty, that was that he didn't initially obtain the property. It's Nanakuli Homestead Association. And the reason why he didn't obtain at that time is because he had problems with his other licensing that he have with D H H L. So Nanakuli Homestead Association, that was, at that time, he was or wasn't with Polly Grace and all those guys, had obtained the property for development. And then it didn't really go out to uncertain because they're exempt to certain procurement. But again, it went as to the development of Kali Watson. And then after Kali Watson development, then he ended up managing the property. This is what, this is not what I'm bringing up. This is the stuff that's coming out of Hawaiian Homestead and Nanakuli community. So this isn't the stuff that I made up or making up. It has all a stamp of D H H L. That is the concern of that conflict. And don't get me wrong, like I said, I enjoyed the place. I think he did a wonderful job. The conflict was on how he got to be the developer and later on he's the manager. And again, that's, that's the only question that I wanted to ask. I understand you know that, but do you think there's not a conflict of interest?
And I, and I, and I don't, only because, um, when you obtain D H H L land lot development, most of are, are five oh one C threes, you're a nonprofit. So Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead Association had the ability to apply for this, uh, lot development in Nanakuli. Of course, with a lot development under the homestead associations, you need a developer. You have a procurement system, we all know that, that you developers apply for procurement. And so he was the only, uh, developer that developed that property. And this is an example of Ulukeke Kui in Miley. The procurement system went out in Ulukeke Kui. He was the only developer that applied for it. Nobody wanted it. And so what do you do? You take the developer and the less developer to do that project. I really don't think it's a conflict because it's still under the Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead Association that manages it, collects the rent into the, um, homestead. Every homestead, whether it's Panaeva in Maui, they have associations. Prince Kohio, Big Island, you know, all these Kamakana Alii, Far Kapule, they have associations that they, they oversee the, the, uh, facility. But community benefit packages from these malls go to the associations in every island. So if you're asking me if there's a conflict, I don't because it's now the Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead Association oversees the lot development of Nanakuli Center.
At that time, who was the members on top of the association? How much members did it have?
Oh God, well, I know Brother Kamaki and, you know, bless him, he's ill, but I know he would have been here. But, um, I think it was Kamaki, Kimo, um, it's been a while, um. Um, I served, um, for, um, maybe a year and a half. I'm trying to do my best in covering it. Um, the association is now together. They're active, um, and Tiani, they have their presidents and everyone in place. And similar to the Wine Eye Valley Association, similar to Princess Kahano, we have associations that oversee the, 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 the properties.
And do you know how much members have you, you from the, said, do you know how much members the Nanakuli Homestead Association?
I think we have like nine, nine, nine. So you have a quorum of nine, so you have voting, voting members.
The only reason why I ask is because when I ask the families that live there, none of them can apply to be homesteaders. To be, uh, association members. They, they're not accepting homes. But when you're in a homestead, you name Kapule, you name Prince Kahano. All those guys, when they bought their home and they lived there, they all become association members. Why is Nanakuli only having nine members for that many years? And at any one time, was Kali Watson ever on the board of the Nanakuli Homestead?
These are beneficiaries that serve on the homestead boards. These, these are beneficiaries that serve as president, vice president, secretary, treasurer. We have, you know, we have two associations in Nanakuli. One is, uh, Aho Poha on Nanakuli. The other is a Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead. They're both active.
Yeah, so, yeah, so twenty years ago, when, uh, we looked into the homestead and al- also with you, um, nobody could become members of the homestead. My brother-in-law, my sister-in-law, my aunties, my uncles. Even when we went to the meeting, um, they asked Kamaki, Kimo them. It was never open for anybody else to go in there because they had a setup on the homestead. Kamaki, Amaleh and his wife was homesteading associations for life. And that was the thing that was concerning not only me, but also you at the time. Because there was only nine, whatever members are, was making a decision on this kind of big money projects. And not everybody in the community that was in, in for it or against it at the time. And that's what I wanted to know.
But enclosing Nanakuli Village and Hale Makana Nanakuli, we embrace, we had several town meetings and community meetings. And so if you're a beneficiary and you're not active, I'm sorry, you missed it. It's like board members, if you don't attend, I mean, and you don't get involved in, in, in these meetings, I mean, you, you miss it. And it's always after the fact when something comes up, then they say, oh, we weren't told, we weren't asked. But, you know, you have associations, you have meetings established, you have agendas, you have your officers. And this is how the Homestead Association works in every homestead, um, in Oahu. But, um, thank you for that. Yeah, thank you.
Is the thing Milanani Tras on? Okay, she's probably back at work at Oahu. Oh, I'm, I'm gonna ask the question anyway. She don't need to answer. There's a video of Milanani Tras on the tragic incident at Kauai. Uh, the incident that Kali Watson was the director at the time. She had a show that was on TV questioning, questioning the media and the steps that had taken place in his, uh, reason of him being evicted. And having people come there to evict him with the sheriffs and the people with the machines and everything. So now, I just wanna make this on the record, and not at one, any time that he was protesting his mortgage. He was protesting and nothing to do with Kali Watson at the time, is the building of his house from in the eighties. And that's why he was not saying that he wasn't paying him. He was putting him into a escrow account. And later on, when he had wrote the check to the Department of Hawaiian Homelands, they sent the check back. And that's why I'm just kind of concerned. Now I understand Milanani Tras, it's just like with Patty. Everybody changed, um, um, that, that's fine. But this was a very tragic incident that they said they was gonna do a thorough investigation on what had happened. Wanna be on the record, he did not kill himself. He did not put the gas on his head. He did die in the home because they was trying to evict him of not paying his lease rent. So those are the things that I just kind of wanted to ask clearly from her. Because I know there's projects that she wants to do that is also in co- cooperating, uh, designing Kali Watson. So just like a lot of the people that came before us, who worked with them, from the electricians to the contracting companies and whatnot, one time or another, they worked for him. And they worked under him or he worked for them, or they worked for him. Doesn't matter. So I just wanna, I'm just saying this because I get all of this stuff that was given me to D H H L and I just wanted to clarify with some of the testifiers. Because at one time, that's the reason why I was heavily involved and knew that none of my family members, and they involve, a lot of them involve, but they're not and they cannot. Anybody wants to check that, go check. You cannot become a member of Kamaki Kanahela in the Sharks Homestead Association. That's the reason why they have nine. At the time, they had Patty Turiya and Auntie Polly, Granny Polly Grace. They had resigned, um, over the years. And not anybody can be. If you live on a homestead association, you should be able to join them, have an application process, put them online, give it to you, send to you in mail. None of that was taking place. And it hasn't been taking place. There are active. But previous to all of this, it was inactive. There was nothing on the website, there was no reporting, and nothing was being done. So that going forward, so the other rest of the people is not here, chairs, so I'll, I'll yield to my test, um, questions to asking people that's not here. Thank you.
Do you also have any other questions for the testifiers? Um, I just have a follow-up question actually from Myron. Is Myron still there? Yes, I don't know if you can respond, I, um, to, to the concerns that were just raised by Vice Chair. You can come forward. Um, I, I, because I believe that Mr. Bumajem is, is part of the Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead Association that, um, has the management over Nanakuli Village Center? And is it true that your, your membership is closed off?
Um, I don't, I'm not sure what you're talking about. Uh, I don't, I don't live in Nanakuli.
Okay, okay.
Um, all I can say, all I can say is that the, uh, based on the question that you asked me earlier, um, the, the, the center, the Nanakuli Center was built for the purpose of helping the kids in terms of getting ready for the school of workers.
Okay, got it. Yeah. Okay, thank you. And, uh, okay, but thank you. So maybe Jermaine Myers, though, are you a member of that association? Can you, maybe respond to the concerns being raised by the Vice Chair? Is it true that the membership is closed and only nine people are members and?
No, that's true. Uh, I don't, I don't belong to anyone. I tried to join the Nanakuli Association. And that is true. I've been a lessee since two thousand and one. And what Senator Favela says, I have tried and tried and tried and tried to get application and then said it to the commissioners when I go to testify. But I wanna really make clear that there's a difference between a developer who's be executing a vision of an association versus an association and their board. So I don't fault, fault Kali for how the behavior. It's like, not different than when you're saying, oh, you know, the land is supposed to be for Hawaiians. But Nanakuli High School, in a minute, Hawaiians and non-Hawaians are on there. Nani Ikapono, Hawaiians and non-Hawaians go to that school. Kauai Hona, same thing. And so we have a mixture, but I always gotta keep in mind who's in charge of making what decisions, who impacted it. And Kali hasn't impacted. He's like super entity of, I'm gonna execute your vision and that's all I can do. He doesn't have kunianna in how the association is not having tenants or not giving applications. That shouldn't be his fault. And so I just wanna delineate that. I'm still trying to become a member of Nanakuli Association. And that's for Kamaki and Mike for answer. But that's not for Kali. And so I will stand by my testimony of supporting him. Because I go in and read the annual reports. I look at who's responsible. And you know, like with Kaila Law, with Race, uh, Railway, um, the racetrack, Kali started the vision to get that land back. Go and read the annual reports. It's true, his kunianna, it is true, his efforts that that man came back. But he couldn't finish it up because Kaitana stopped him. And so that's where I, I really like to go to Palapala and go where, what, and who. And I'd never like to make fault on someone that is not responsible for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me, let me respond. It, it wasn't the fault, it's the pattern. I'm not talking about Kali. I'm talking about the pattern.
No, you're right. No, you're right. We're talking about it. In the meantime, we're lessees and we're renting. And we, we're living in, many of them are from one homestead lot. I'm confirmed, my grandmother has fourteen homestead, fourteen children, and she only had a half an acre. And what did she do? She subinvited it. She gave it to her older child rather than leaving and making a family. Same thing with my tutor on fourth row. He has one half an acre and he has sixteen children. My, my dad is one of sixteen. And my grandpa, while he's living and while he's raising his family and his older children are becoming old enough to have a homestead lot, he subinvited his half an acre and he gave my auntie one and my uncle the other. So that's all we, and so when Kali says there's overcrowding, he is correct. There is overcrowding. Why? It's so, it's so costly to live in Hawaii. My sister struggled. She went to, she lived in Waikiki, then she lived in Kula Street, and then she lived in, uh, Manoa. All renting from the age of eighteen, all renting. And I was the same way. I used to live at Shartam, uh, I used to live at Maqah Valley, renting. But now, ever since two thousand and one, in my homestead lessee, and I've been trying to become an association member. But that's not Kali's fault. Why?
Again, the curtain and every pipe was his fault. Just giving one synop- synopsis on how things would take place. On the decision of the Homestead Association with association themselves with Kali Watson. I'm not saying that Kali Watson's fault, that they don't put their minutes up. But what I'm saying is they're making a decision with nine members, for how much people live in Nanakuli Homestead. That's what I'm talking about. So I'm not saying it's Kali Watson's fault. I'm saying that they made a decision and put them up to bid. I like see that. I like see that. You say get Palapala. I like see when they put up the bid and how much bids came in. Because I have getting different information from your homesteaders in Nanakuli that there wasn't an equal bidding, um, procurement process because of the homestead, nine members or whatevers. Bias with the friendship and the letter written on behalf of the president of Homestead Association, on behalf of Kali Watson. That's what I'm trying to say. But I wasn't saying it was his fault anywhere. I'm just saying on the biasness on how things take place on D H H L land with different properties and different ways. That's all. Wasn't blaming Kali with the homestead. So just, you gotta understand that. A lot of stuff is gonna come out in this testimony and a testimony for today.
May I, I, I actually would take into consideration that people are not busting down the doors to develop Hawaiian homelands. They're not pounding it down like, oh my God, you guys have so much money, you know, let me develop this or let me develop that. I mean, and in, in addition to that, to make home loans. There's a lawsuit right now with Wampi Kanahela because it's like, hey, how come Bank of America is not participating, giving homesteaders, um, loans? So, you know, we understand what it's like when there's much demand and need. There's much demand and there's much need, but there's hardly anybody that's like raising their hand and saying, I wanna come and help you get this, you know, economic sustainability engine under your association. Or I wanna help you guys get a new homestead lot. Or I wanna help you guys make the old house, the one that, from two days away from me. It was so dilapidated. Anthony always had buckets underneath the, the ceiling because it was always raining. And this Kali that came to it, not Hawaiian homelands, he was already powered Hawaiian homelands. Shouldn't we move on? He powered already served the Hawaiians.
You got the grant from Hawaiian homelands to do that.
Correct, because who's, where is the money? Where is the money? Helping the Hawaiians except a small group of people.
Not his money though, it's Hawaiian homes money.
It's not, the Hawaiians got his money either. And association, nobody's knocking down the doors and going, here's twenty thousand dollars in order for you to help you put a down payment on your home. And so I just wanna say I applaud the legislators, uh, to seven nine last year. We're on the cusp of having six hundred million dollars in order to help lot development and loans. And that's where my focus is on. My focus is on the amount of short term that got and amount of work that got and the amount of issues that have with the department and everything. And like, that's where I'm, right now, my focus is. Mahalo.
Thank you. Any other questions for the testifiers? Okay, okay, seeing none, then we'll call up the nominee, um, Kali Watson. And feel free to make a statement if you wish, uh, prior to questioning.
Chair Shimon Bakuro and members of the committee. Over a century ago, Prince Jonah Kuia recognized the declining condition of the Hawaiian people. Called for immediate action. The dwindling numbers and squalid living conditions motivated his campaign to revitalize our culture and rekindle hope. He was convinced that the only method in which to rehabilitate the race was placing back upon the soil. Charles Curry, who chaired the Congressional House Committee that passed the Hawaiian homelands program, recounted Kuia's passion. Quote, "He pleaded that the act be passed in order that a grave injustice might be rectified." "I never heard a man speak more sincerely or with greater feeling." Kuia understood that the same old behavior would not produce a different result, so he did something about it. That's what leaders do. I'm sure that Kuia would be proud of his creation, but I doubt that- but I doubt that he would settle for the impact it has had over the past century. A recent article in Civil Beat offered a fair summary. Quote, "The homelands program has benefited tens of thousands of people, but its reputation has been blackened by decades of bureaucratic mismanagement that has left three times as many others dangling in limbo, forlornly awaiting their turn." "Many eligible claimants have died while politicians squabble over how best to implement a workable program." While the three hundred twenty-eight million dollar historic kalima versus state of Hawaii settlement involving thousands of native Hawaiian waitlist plaintiffs is commendable, Tom Grandia, local attorney who filed the case twenty-four years ago stated, quote, "It's a joyous occasion, but it's also bittersweet for all those people who are not here who see the end of the struggle." Of roughly twenty-seven hundred plaintiffs, nine hundred fifty-three have died since the case was filed in nineteen ninety-nine. More continue to die. We are in an emergency situation. Like Kuhio, this legislature, as well as Governors Iggy and Green, also recognize the need for critical leadership and action to achieve transformative outcomes. Your decision to appropriate six hundred million dollars to construct new communities to accelerate reduction of the Hawaiian homes waitlist provides the agency with resources that are far better calibrated to the needs of beneficiaries. I applaud your commitment. Recognize your sense of urgency and appreciate your need to have a rigorous confirmation process to ensure appointment of a department chair who's prepared to seize the moment. Make prudent use of your investment, reduce the waitlist, and significantly enhance the well-being of our beneficiaries. I'm honored to have been selected by Governor Green to serve as Department of Hawaiian Homelands Chair at this historic inflection point, and I humbly offer my record for your review and performing your duties of confirmation. In consideration of time, rather than summarize my professional record, I would be pleased to clarify any aspects of my background that may not be clear. But I do wish to highlight what I consider to be the two most important takeaways. First, I enjoyed the privilege of serving in this role from nineteen ninety-five to nineteen ninety-eight. I would note that a cost of one hundred sixty-four point five million dollars over four years, we produced thirty-one hundred new homestead lots. I am proud of our record. It wasn't as many homes as were needed or that we wanted to build, but it made an immense difference in the lives of those who were awarded homes. You see the happy faces of beneficiaries receiving awards at the Princess Khanu States and Kalawahini Homesteads is something I always remember and feel good about. Second, I wish to bring to your attention that my interest in the issues facing the agency did not end upon my transition from the role. After concluding my service as DHHL Director, I launched a native Hawaiian nonprofit development company to achieve impacts through the private sector. Some of our projects include the Kahale Pono Dilapidated Replacement Homes Project, the Nanakuli Village Center. My nonprofit is now working on the Uluehi or Uleke Kukui, uh, project in Wainai on DHHL land whereby H C D B is renovating it into forty affordable rental units for waitlist beneficiaries and a multi-service center to prepare them for DHHL homeownership. If confirmed this chair, I will step down from H C D B and refuse myself from any DHHL actions involving H C D B. If it were not asked by Governor Green to consider a return to the department, I would continue these efforts to achieve a public benefit with private resources. That, in fact, would be the easier path for me. But when I reflected on how much more I know about the development business and how the knowledge could help my services chair, I saw an opportunity to restructure the department's suboptimal systems, take advantage of my relationships with different organization. And more importantly, I felt a duty to rise to the challenge. There are several key strategies learned from my development experience that I want to apply. The ability to leverage funding with low-income housing tax credits, bond financing, rental housing revolving fund, loan programs, and access to other funding sources will allow me to use the Act Two Seventy-Nine funds of six hundred million dollars far more efficiently. I also truly appreciate the importance of design-build strategies and using the state's request for qualification approach to partner with capable developers. This will allow us to free up funds to develop more units beyond the twenty projects under the Hawaiian Homes Commission adopted strategic plan and meet the deadlines imposed by the legislature. We must also fast-track homestead awards upfront rather than issuing them at the back end of developments. Too many waitlists, listeners have died before getting their awards to the detriment of their successors, who don't qualify for the initial awards. Prince Kuhio left us a profoundly important legacy to revitalize the Hawaiian people. Here just to, quote, "Stick together and try to agree to the best of your ability to meet the most important problem, the rehabilitation of our race." I look forward to sticking together with this legislature, Governor Green's administration, other branches of government, the Alii legacies, OHA, the Hawaiian community, and citizens of Hawaii to fulfill Prince Kuhio's charge. Mahalo for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Watson. Any members, questions?
Hello, Kali, thank you for being here and volunteering for this position. Uh, and thank you for your comments upfront about the nature of your, uh, private business relationships with the department. So I know you acknowledge that, uh, as it relates to matters between Hawaii Community Development Board and the department, you intend to, going forward, if confirmed, step down and recuse yourself from actions related to the, the H C D B. That's correct. Uh, multiple testifiers, as you are aware, uh, have raised concerns over your involvement in H C D B, which is a nonprofit entity. And then as, as listed in your, uh, resume, the Hawaiian, Hawaiian Community Development Enterprises LLC, which, um, I understand is a for-profit subsidiary of the, the H C D B.
That's correct.
Yeah. Can you, can you take us through, um, your involvement in the different nonprofit and for-profit entities uh, that have developed and are currently involved in the development of DHHL projects?
Well, the Hawaiian Community Development Board, uh, when I left the, uh, Department of Hawaiian Homelands, I was approached by Kamaki Kanahela and Mike Katina. Uh, they had this vision regarding the Nanakuli Village Center. And so, uh, they asked me to help them. And I felt, uh, you know, I had not finished my, uh, uh, effort to kind of have the program excel as well as flourish in especially the areas of the communities. And so when they asked me that, uh, I determined that the best and most effective way, because of the status of a nonprofit, was to create a nonprofit. So what I did, I set up a board made up of beneficiaries. All the people on the board, presently so, are either from the homestead communities, and are leaders of the communities, or actual native Hawaiians. Uh, so we created this nonprofit, and we started to, uh, identify different projects that we could, I guess, get involved in, uh, besides the Nanakuli Village Center. So one of the first and probably the hardest projects I've ever worked on was the replacement home project. And so we were able to go in, identify, uh, people with dilapidated homes, and we fixed them up. We got the P V D to waive the dump fees. We got Nahazas, home payments, we got OHA to throw in money. And then we got small contractors to participate in helping these families. Uh, and we also, more importantly, tried to, uh, counsel them on homeownership as well as ability to, uh, build these or work with contractors. So that was a successful project, uh, when we got through with that. Uh, and, and for that, the department gave our, uh, this piece of property that we were using to generate income, a discount, five thousand per month. But when we got through with that, uh, we, the nonprofit migrated, migrated over to focusing on the Nanakuli Village Center. And during that two-year period, uh, we got bills from the department, uh, with the five thousand discount. I assumed that, uh, the department was okay with that, especially since what we're doing. And today, you see the efforts resulted in a thriving Nanakuli Village Center that has a housing project in the back, a cultural learning center, the Kalahi Okana.
If, if I may.
Sure.
Uh, because that was an answer, let me clarify. The, the questions and the concerns that I, uh, that I'm asking about relate to the testifier concerns about your involvement. Several testifiers noted a number of different private for-profit entities of which you have been involved, that have done business with the department. Your resume indicates your involvement as president and CEO of the Hawaii Community Development Board since, since about the time you left. There was a little bit of period where you were, um, consulate OHA after leaving the DHHL Chair
Sure.
in nineteen ninety-eight. And then in two thousand, you started the Hawaii Community Development Board. Um, are any of the members of the Hawaii Community Development Board currently compensated for their?
No.
Okay, are any of the immediate family members of yours?
No.
Are, aside from your employment for Hawaii Community Development Board, would you, you currently take a salary?
Well, that doesn't come from the, uh, directly from the nonprofit. It comes from the money generated from the parcel that we're running from the department. Part of, uh, the revenue generated from the leasing of the property, which we actually developed and made it, uh, you know, uh, generate income, was, is used to compensate myself, keep the, the lights on, uh, pay for the expenses of running the, the industrial park, uh, where there's main, maintenance issues or environmental issues. Uh, funds from that rent is used to take care of those expenses.
Okay. Um, are, are any of, do you have any financial ties to any of the other members of the Community Development Board or any, any other employees of the board? Immediate family members of yours?
Well, the, uh, I'm not quite sure I understand.
Well, so these questions are going toward the concerns about your conflict, potential conflicts of interest with entities that are perceived to be currently engaged in business practices with the department or who have the potential to engage in future practices before the department, in which case this recusal scenario, you know, may come into play. So I guess I'm trying to pick apart from your resume in terms of the active entities that you're professionally involved in, where the potential conflicts might exist so that, as a follow-up to that, we can more clearly define what circumstances under which you might need to take a recusal.
Okay, sure.
You know, should it, should it arise? So, so just to, just to make it crystal clear, if you primarily work for a nonprofit, then potential conflicts could arise if, uh, members of your immediate family or individuals that you have uh, external business ties to are members of the board, if members of your immediate family or people who you have external business ties to were employed by the nonprofit entity, or if, uh, any of those types of relationships exist in any subsidiary entities that are owned by the nonprofit. Those, those seem to me to be the logical scenarios in which there might be a conflict situation, right?
Yeah, sure.
So, so if you can help me understand whether any of those are potential avenues for conflict, then we can have a conversation about what a recusal would look like.
Sure.
And in the alternative, if none of those potential scenarios exist, then we can move on to other questions.
Sure. Well, the Hawaiian Community Development Board, um, is a nonprofit five-one-C-three, uh, licensed in the state of Hawaii. Uh, part of the, uh, I guess, the effort of especially in trying to develop affordable housing, whether it be on DHHL or private lands, uh, is, is very difficult. And so, one of the first things that we did, especially on the Nanakuli Village Center, was we partnership, partnership with Urban Housing Communities, which was a for-profit developer out of California that has since done a whole bunch of affordable housing projects here in Hawaii. But that was our first, uh, I guess, uh, experience in developing affordable housing, in this particular case, on Hawaiian homelands. And so what we did was, uh, we ran the lease initially through Hawaii Community Development Board as well as with, uh, a limited partnership that typically when you develop these kind of projects, you have to set up an LP for various tax write-offs, investors, uh, uh, to generate money to fund, uh, these type of projects. So if you look at all the projects, uh, that we've been involved in, typically you'll find H C D B as a nonprofit, part of this LP partnership with for-profit entities. Uh, in some cases, it's more window dressing, so we can go into H H F T C, get funding, which then is used to build these projects. That particular process is very competitive, so you have to, uh, uh, compete with other developers that also partner up with nonprofits. And so, by in the process, uh, sometimes, you know, we get a flat fee for that participation. In other times where we contribute funds to the pre-development costs, uh, we get a bigger share. But invariably, whatever money is generated goes into the nonprofit, is reported as income, uh, because it's a nonprofit, there's pub, public disclosure, auditing, and final, uh, tax, taxes that are filed, which IRS reviews, make sure we're not, uh, guilty of activities that might jeopardize our non, our tax status. Uh, with respect to H C D B, besides these affordable housing projects, and there's quite a few that we've been involved with, uh, we've also gone in to develop, like in the Uluke Kukui project. That's a nonprofit that's doing the work, but it's worked and partnered up with, uh, it's really Holdings Inc., which is again, a for-profit. But by doing that, you have a combination of a very experienced developer as well as an experienced nonprofit entity that can collectively go in and get the funding that is so critical for these types of affordable housing projects. Are there conflict? I don't think so. Just like when we worked with Nanakuli Homestead Community Association, which is also a five-one-C-three. They brought us in two different nonprofits with a specific purpose of developing Nanakuli Village Center. So we, with the developer experience, Hawaiian Community Development, was able to facilitate these new market tax grade, the G I A funds, and just a variety of funding sources to build, build the different sections. Nanakuli Homestead was a visionary. They had the community support as well as the ability to get a lease from, uh, the Department of Hawaiian Homelands to they could facilitate, facilitate this Nanakuli Village Center. So was there a conflict? I don't think so, even though, you know, we had to use different approaches for different parts of the development. Uh, it was successful.
So, I, okay, so I think, uh, I, I appreciate that answer. I think what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, if you, uh, distinguish yourself personally from the nonprofit Hawaii Community Development Board as an entity, to me, the conflict, the potential conflict would arise if you had a personal financial interest with any of the partner entities that you engaged in projects with. Because, you know, my understanding is that it's pretty common practices you mentioned, you know, on an individual, on each individual development, you know, your nonprofit potentially takes a for-profit partner in order to establish whatever necessary funding or expertise in order to obtain the different types of funding, whether it's public subsidy like H H F T C or tax credits or just private capital.
Right.
Uh, so those, you know, those, those, uh, necessitate the creation of individual entities, you know, connected with the different projects.
Sure.
The question is, if you become DHHL Chair, you have your connection to Hawaii Community Development Board as an employee of that entity, serving in the role of president and CEO. Right? Are there any other external private interests that you hold in any other potential private entities that could potentially be bringing business before the board?
Well, as you know, H C D B. Eight, as you know, HDB uh HDB is a separate entity from me as an individual.
Right.
Uh I did, I am serving as a president and CEO of it, it's a, you know, a position that uh. You know, is run actually, the policy is set by our board. Uh, you know, with respect to its relationship personally, no, once I step down, that's it. You know, I don't have any vested interest, I mean, as a nonprofit, you don't have any shares or.
Right, so your only financial interest in the nonprofit is is the what whatever sort of salary compensation. Uh agreement you have to cer- when you in your position as the president and CEO.
Right.
Right, but what I'm talking about is, do you have any external interests in any entities that have done business with the with the nonprofit?
No, I don't have any external interests uh with respect to any uh. Any businesses, I mean, HDB is HDB, it's very, you know, that's that's the entity I I work with.
Do any members of your immediate family also work for HDB?
No, they don't.
Okay, do any individual, do do any immediate members of your family maintain any employment? Or financial interest in any of the private entities that you've partnered with over the years to do DHHL projects?
Well, I was, I've been very fortunate, and this is one reason why I kinda hesitated to take this job. Uh my son, uh who was working with Starnote Two, uh corporate lawyer and. You know, kind of good stuff and was very successful. We, along with my partner, uh Chris Flaherty, uh which are, we've collectively uh collectively created a partnership. With three lead ACDB to form Ikana Kea Development LLC. Now, that particular development, which is a combination of these two entities, as is and will be doing a lot of developments. And so we were uh, me and Chris were, most of Chris was successful in talking. Uh my son to be joining our uh, you know, partnership Ikana Kea, so he now serves as in-house counsel. And so, you know, we also have Chris's son, who's also working and uh. Uh Patty Barbie has also brought on her son, uh daughter. And so we have a pretty awesome development team that was created, and I kinda regret. Uh leaving that when we just suddenly uh, you know, this job came up. And it it's kind of a regret for me because uh it it's a very successful development company and now, you know. We have a collection of family members that really are the future generation of this particular development company, and we're very successful. So for me to take this job, it was a real hesitancy on my part to do it. Uh especially with us just recently bringing my son on, so, you know, the fact is uh. You know, I I I see the challenge in doing this job, I see this as a historic opportunity to do something really good for the department. Especially with my development experience, uh which I apply, and I can assure you, any conflict uh. That may come up because we're dealing with HDB, which I hope HDB will continue to do the things that I did when I was there. Cause it's it's pretty awesome, the uh the ability to use this nonprofit to help facilitate. Uh different projects in the homesteading community, I'd like to see that continue, I don't see that as a conflict.
I'm almost done, I feel, okay, so. Aside from HDB and then your interest in this uh Ikana Kea organization. Are there any other private entities that you maintain a financial interest in that could potentially do business with the Department of Hawaii Homelands?
Well, uh again, I don't see that as a conflict in the sense that these partnerships, uh everything is, you know, pretty straightforward. The uh, you know, it's uh, I don't know, I'm I'm not sure exactly. I mean, like I said, in development, you gotta make all these different partnerships and limited partnerships and, you know, LLCs and. It's very convoluted, but it's pretty straightforward.
So so as it relates to HDB and Ikana Kea uh interest in potential actions before. Uh the department. What what are your, what are your intentions and how you will treat your interest in that entity going forward?
Well, again, I don't have any interest in that, like I said, I was a uh president and CEO, once I stepped down, that's it. Including any kind of relationship to Ikana Kea, uh that also terminates. Uh I do hope, and you know, again, you know, it's something that even my uh partner, my present partner is very hesitant to be involved. Because, you know, we we we're not out, I mean, we got enough projects, we don't need these projects. And so for us to go in and then then be accused of, you know, self-dealing and all this other kind kind of stuff. Is something that he does not want because he doesn't need it. But I hope to convince that entity to work with the department and. Take a look at uh, you know, working with the different homestead associations and be a conduit and advisor as well as a partner if possible. To help those guys move forward on their project, because we're not just doing vertical construction, we're looking at kapura housing and other stuff.
Um please, audience, yeah, ordering the audience, yeah, when the floor is to the GM, you know.
If you can repeat the. Uh yeah, the uh, Kenaka uh, that that's a great development company. I can see that helping a whole ton of different associations to move their projects, especially these uh kind of projects that are out there. But are just sitting, I mean, I've identified five different uh community projects in the homesteading ar- area. They're just sitting because they lack the expertise, they don't know how to do the kind of funding that we did, as well as the development side, as well as. Uh, you know, the department's uh lack of participation in developing infrastructure. So all of this is is very, very involved and uh, you know, like, one of the testifiers uh mentioned, you know. Not too many people are rushing to go and work on DHHL lands, uh but the thing is, now that we have six hundred million. Now that I know how to do developments, now I know how to work with the different other E-trust and organizations who have approached me. To do developments on trust lands other than DHHL. It is gonna be a very exciting time for the future of the Hawaiians, because it's, we're not just limiting ourselves. Because as you know, under Act two seventy nine, we can acquire other lands, and we intend to do that in very exciting and nice areas throughout the state.
Which I can appreciate, I just, you know, in your comments, you mentioned that you intend to step down from HDB.
Right.
And recuse yourself from actions taken at the commission level relating to HDB business with the department. And so what I just wanna make crystal clear because of how much testimony, how much of the opposition testimony was centered around this specific issue. I just wanna make it crystal clear that. There's HDB and there's HDB potential actions before the commission. And that there are no other entities in which you maintain a financial interest. That could come before the commission in which you have to, you know, let's acknowledge all the potential conflicts. So that when they arise before the commission, you can publicly recuse and then we can just keep going.
Sure.
Right?
Yeah.
So that's it.
Yeah, I I guess the people that know me, that I'm pretty straightforward and honest, I would never do anything that would bring. This respect to my family, HDB or the the program. So with regarding recusing, uh if there's any slight indication or connection that might create that conflict. I would definitely recuse myself as well as make a full disclosure of any and everything that might but be. Possibly perceived as a conflict, even though it may not be.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, other questions, members? Okay, okay, Senator Harrow, thank you.
Thanks for. Accepting the offer, I guess. Yeah, I just wanted to mention uh uh the the role we have with the, not only this committee, but the Senate in particular.
Sure.
Uh I guess, a bonus question and a civics course would be what, you know, the advice and consent role of the Senate is very unique. Uh most people don't understand it, um we are responsible for uh vetting all of the. All of the top leaders in the executive branch, except the governor, lieutenant governor, and all of the judicial branch. Uh and so I know we tend to downplay it a little bit, because the House doesn't have that power. Uh but it is a a very respons- uh important power and and responsibility, so I wanna. Um I'm thank you for willing to, being willing to engage in this, um. So I have, my questions are about conflict interests, about going forward. I don't, I I got materials, I haven't, I've had some family concerns, I haven't had time, sorry, I had to cancel our meeting. Because I wanted to at least do a little, you know, uh scan of the material, so I, so even though, even though I did do that. I still uh didn't go real deep, so I, my questions are, are just to get a a a grip of the of the big picture. Uh, I understand your your development of your business. Um relationships and businesses happened from the time you left um uh. The department twenty years ago, is that about right?
Well, during my time there, I also developed relationships with different organizations.
Right, right, but on a, a conflict, we're we're gonna, we're gonna um. Get as far into conflict of interest as possible, so I don't have any other questions at this point.
Okay.
Okay, so let's, we could just, that way we can cut to the chase, right? And the clear, so from my point of view, uh in a way, it reminds me of Carlton Chain. Where the idea of you wanna bring business experience uh to the state. To, in that case, to uh be able to uh steward the resources. Um but uh the concern was that um, uh you you need to trans- transfer that interest. So that it's appropriate in a new setting, and so for you, you have a lot of business um background. Um and the relationships are different, you know, in business you have a uh um, you're. There's a reciprocity, you know, we we, you know, we're mutual and 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 reciprocate and and so forth. In government, we don't do that, there's, there is ethics code and there's no favoritism. Um uh I know it's hard, we're human beings and so forth, but uh I wanna get a sense that. Uh you can, you know the line, and that you don't bring it, you don't bring your favorite. Cause you do have a favorite, which is your board, which is fine, not no problem there, uh that you leave it there and you don't bring it into the department. Okay, so not only is it technical, technically you're not being paid, but you don't maneuver it. And use uh your resources and your discretion, the 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 board chair has, the board chair has enormous discretion. In fact, I think there's some questions that that will arise about the the powers of the the director himself or herself. Uh independent of the commission or in complementary with the commission. Um and and so, and I know that's a challenge and that's that's the the bar that I would wanna hold you in terms of uh conflict interest. Um, you know, I I spoke with Robert Harris, the um executive director of the Ethics Commission, have you, have you talked with them?
Uh I'm aware of him, but I haven't talked to him.
Or or the commission, you know, have you got met with him about, how do you handle the, what things would you need to recuse yourself?
Uh, well, I I'm pretty familiar with what.
Financial interests of any company that might go between before, so, o- okay, let me back up a couple of steps and then we'll. What is the total amount of dollars, if you can estimate, that the nonprofit received? In your tenure? Over the twenty years, yeah, the whole time.
Um, well, we were pretty successful in uh developing that small industrial park, which uh. You know, about half of it we shared with the department, and the other half we used to not only fund our nonprofit and all the work it's been doing. Uh but we also uh, you know, uh, use some of that funds to pay for the pre-development costs. So for some of the uh affordable housing projects we're doing, for example, the Ulu Kikukui.
Dollar amount, I'm trying to just gauge, is it?
You know, that's hard, I mean.
Five fifty or, I I I'm just trying to get some, some.
It's all public record, but.
Do you have a aggregate, uh like a?
Over twenty years?
Yeah.
I I I don't know what the total is, but uh we did do well in trying to generate money, not a lot of money, but uh. You know, in the recent years, we're generating maybe six hundred thousand.
Right.
Then splitting with the department and then using it for pre-development for some of the projects.
Uh I guess I'll have to assign my staff to shut it up.
It it's all public records.
Yeah, I know, but it's, you know, I I.
We can get you those.
Yeah, that actually helps, and my staff.
Make them available.
Just to get an idea, um and what is the process, so how, what is the process that um that the department used? In order to award the kind, X number of, I don't know how many dozens of contracts you you got, in order to build. You know, homes, so I'm, you know, I I I don't wanna have it sound like it's a bad thing, I think it's a good thing that you. You know, can can deliver on the department's promises.
Well, mo- most of the money we raised was uh raised by our own nonprofit, uh we went out and got grants, uh the department uh. Uh they could, did give a coolie a grant, but that was to the Nanakuli Homestead Community Association.
So from the department and the commissions, either the commissions vote.
Right.
Or a director's decision, a letter or what, I'm not sure what the director had powers, but that that. Had funds transferred from the department to the nonprofit, which then used it, you know, in nonprofit ways. Better Hawaiians, um. What was the process, uh was it bidding or was it um negotiation or?
Uh well, for example.
Not sure what the procurement process is, let's say if you were through.
For example, the uh Kahale Pono uh dilapidated uh home replacement project. We uh approached the department, our nonprofit, said, you know, this is what we'd like to do. And so we were able to get some Nahaza funds, and these funds, you know, we didn't make money on that particular project. We we use the funds to help. Right.
Um and had the assistance of some federal funds that.
Federal funds.
Separately, which then, I would imagine with the commission would be persuaded to match it. Um because it would, you know, double the amount or whatever, uh okay, um so uh what, are there others? Um, I'm trying to ask, did you receive any sole source contracts?
Um, not that I can think of, I mean, you know, most of the stuff, we kinda moved on our our own, I mean, we. And that was part of the the challenge in working with the department, they weren't active in development, the Nanakuli Village Center was all about.
Right.
You know, getting it done uh through our nonprofit, the only thing that we relied on from the department was the lease. Which, you know, once we got site control, then we were able to uh do these different projects. But the the department, uh other than helping in the CPR of the different uh units, so we could develop these separate project. That was about the extent of their participation.
Sounds like you're, in a way you kind of initiate, you came up with ideas and a way to initiate projects that could help the department.
Well, it was a Nanakuli Homestead Association's idea, they approached me.
Right, right, right.
So that's how I got involved.
Um. This is my first question is, but how many? Developers did a nonprofit, I I noticed I have here thirteen or there may be more.
We're very active with development.
How how do they get their contract from the nonprofit?
Well, they don't get their contract, we enter into a a.
But selected.
Partnership.
Yeah.
They they, most of them came to us because they needed a nonprofit to help them development. And uh, you know, the the HHFTC funding, which is basically the sole source of these types of.
But you were on the nonprofit side, right?
I'm sorry?
You're on the nonprofit.
We're the nonprofit.
So you as president sought out.
She's the other way around.
Oh, was it said?
They they sought me out to.
Really, so.
Participate with them.
Which, are you the nonprofit or are you the profit?
I'm the nonprofit.
Okay, and. And so, did you have financial interests in the, in some of the companies that?
Well, the nonprofit has financial interests, uh for example, the first.
No, here, okay, so did you?
Me? No, I mean, it's a nonprofit, you don't have any shared interest.
Did you have any financial interest or relationship with any of the development companies that the nonprofit contracted with in order to build homes?
No, no, I we, I don't, I don't have a separate.
So that'll help me, that'll, by getting down to these core questions, then it'll, it'll settle a lot of, then I don't have to ask a lot of other.
No, that would be a conflict, I wouldn't do that.
So you don't have any, because um uh the Ethics Commission said that any financial interest you have in any of the companies that even that would go. Before the board or even, maybe even a nonprofit. Um if you have financials, you have to sell those financials, but sounds like you don't have any.
Yeah, it's a nonprofit.
Okay, good.
There's no shares, right?
Okay, so you did not profit, not not a bad word, but pro- I mean, get any income. From any of the development companies that's a not- that your nonprofit awarded.
Well, it's a partnership, you, we have to go collectively.
The answers.
HHFTC, yeah, no, no.
Okay, yeah, that I'm just trying to get, you know, that it's, so um uh, okay. So on your financial disclosures.
Hmm.
Actually, that's just for the past year, but I I guess you would, uh this was since it was set in, you wouldn't have had to shuffle around, some people shuffle around.
No, there's not much to shuffle. No, there's not much to shuffle, you know, the nonprofit, in fact, my wife always gives me grief because I don't make enough money, so you know, it's uh. I uh I don't shuffle nothing.
Well, that's because underlying it is, I you know, because if you're honest face, you would think that you would profit.
Yeah, you would think so.
Yeah.
But they call it a nonprofit.
Well, well, but you could have you could have secretly owned some things.
I don't secretly.
Just trying to clear it up, I mean. If you don't ask a question, people start thinking.
Right, sure.
So you're clean on the profit side, you don't have any interest whatsoever.
No, it's a nonprofit that is.
So there's no incentive, like your, well, your adult son, you know, there was Ethics Commission. Back in the Kazuhaya Shida days in Department of Transportation.
Right.
He gave us, he gave a procurement officer, right, gave it a contract to his adult children's company. And back then, I don't know if it was reversed, the Ethics Commission said you you have to recuse yourself on that. Because even though they're adult, there there's family links um to, and so I I'm uh. So you might wanna check into that, um such, so that would be a a, not sure, final. Uh there would be an ethical consideration for your adult. Children who own companies or or have financial interest in companies. That are awarded um by partnership, you seek yourself out, but it's not a, it's it's um. You know, we tend to work with our friends and, you know, this is private sector, you can do that. But in the public sector, uh um I would encourage you to let go of that. And let them work it out, and that you don't have your hands in to, nonprofit is a good thing. Uh is it is still a corporation, and the difference is, besides the public purpose, is you don't have. You know, uh assets that you can double and triple, you have to only by labor, you can, you know, you're raise um income.
You know, I I guess by having this dialogue, I can think of only one situation where, yeah, I guess it might might be construed as a. Conflict, but uh on the Ulu Keku Kuwi project, um. Nobody wanted to manage it, so my nonprofit had to step up, and nobody wanted to do the developments, so our nonprofit stepped up. Uh so in the interim, while we're waiting for our financing to fall into place, we've got about four point seven five million. In the Haza funds, we've got a rental subsidy uh from the Haza, we also have a commitment from the Bank of Hawaii. For about, I think, four point one million, but we went in uh for a, what do you call it, uh? Uh low income housing tax, no, I'm sorry, a rental housing revolving fund uh uh allocation from HHFTC, so we're waiting for that. In the interim, in order to keep the place, uh you know, uh maintain, I I did contract my son. Uh to do the maintenance, and he's paid forty five hundred a month. Uh which is really underpaid, because he not only does the maintenance of the all the uh rounds, but he also when there's a repair that's needed. He goes in himself personally, does the repairs, and so that's all, that's a temporary situation, once we. Get the thing fixed up, then we'll bring in a regular management company, but it's very difficult, uh you know, where. We as a nonprofit is actually literally managing that while we're awaiting uh funding. So the main thing is, we didn't want the facility to deteriorate, uh you know, get busted up, vandalized. So what we're doing is we're allowing the kopuna uh from the Hawaiian Isles to live there along with others uh on an interim basis. But eventually, that will be turned into a uh rental facility for people on the waitlist, native Hawaiians, and we also set up a. Multi-service center to provide uh services to the tenants.
Yeah, yeah, so that. Your, that raises your current status, you're not, you're, there is an acting director, see you're, are you, do you have any authority?
No, I'm still a director, until I get confirmed and I step down.
Oh, so um Ikaka Anderson is not no longer there?
No, Ikaka is the director. I'm just nominated, I haven't.
So you're not, you don't have any authority?
No, nothing, man, I'm just sitting here.
All right, okay, so, cause I I wanna ask you, cause you submitted your responses to the committee on the nonprofit letterhead, I was like.
Yeah, I'm still a nonprofit.
No, I know, but the nonprofit is not nominated.
No, but I'm the president's CEO.
I know, but that has nothing to do with your nomination.
Uh what has everything to do is my response, I'm still president CEO.
See, so. You're coming in, you're you're entering, you're sitting down here speaking as a as a the president of a nonprofit.
Yeah, yes.
So I'm asking you to be here not as that, as an individual who has no relationship with that. For the purposes of this per- of this process.
Sure.
Of our due diligence, of our constitutional powers.
Sure.
Okay, so do you understand, so do you agree with me that you that you should that we consider your responses not in like not? Not tied in to the nonprofit.
Well, you have to, un- until I get confirmed, I'm not gonna step down from my.
Okay, so I I'll get better.
Okay, well, maybe I need to practice or.
Well, I I it's, I'm I have, I have a very specific question, and so I'm, and maybe I have to learn how to do it in only one sentence. Um but um, so, yeah, it has nothing, so I have no interest in having you step down that until you.
Right, that's when I stepped down.
Right, so, why did you submit your personal responses to the nomination? On your companies, your private companies, um private nonprofits, the letterhead?
Because I'm still the president's CEO.
Um, okay, so we're missing something here, as you're, so you're governor nominated the president of the association of the. Uh I didn't see that in the general uh the governor's message. Governor's mess, you saw the governor's message, right? And it it said it nominated you, it didn't have anything to do with uh the the nonprofit.
Yeah, but I I don't need to step down until I get.
This is about wearing hats.
And that's my hat right now.
No, I'm I'm asking you to wear your personal hat.
My personal hat, I can wear my personal hat.
I have no interest in your other other hat until you get, you know, confirmed, then right, then the interest is, how do you uh? Uh avoid the the pitfalls of of uh conflict, potential conflict of interest, which is gonna be inevitable. Um but it can be, it's possible, I I would imagine if we go over, in fact, I have. Uh yeah, so I guess into the deep details, so I'm not sure how to deal with this chair. Um we have a nominee who is not gonna be here on his own accord, but as a president of the nonprofit?
No, no, I I'm here on my own accord, but I, you know, I'm, I wear the hat of the nonprofit.
Are you, can you take the hat off?
Okay, you want me to take it off, I'll take it off.
And it's out the door.
Okay, it's out.
Now we can continue. Sorry, no, this is very instructive, you know, because we don't, not only do we not know civics, we don't know ethics. So, you know, I mean, we don't, cause ethics usually gets taught in in civics, and we don't, we're not very, we're civically challenged. Generally, most of us, most of us, not anyone is rude, we're all fine. But outside, we don't, we're not taught civics a lot, and ethics even less so, and because it's a trust. And it's a trust entity that you would have, that becomes more pronounced. You know, those are headlights, those are like beaming lights, you don't, you know, you wanna uh, you know, cause you don't wanna, you know, mess this up.
Yeah, sure.
And it's great advantages that you bring to it, uh I, you know, I I acknowledge that if we can actually. So that, my question's about how to navigate the the what's inevitable, you know, it's cause someone's gonna. Is perception, and someone's gonna say it, and so we might as well, be prepared now in in case you are.
I understand.
I I think I'll rest here.
Well, only reason why I wanted to just go quickly, um in two thousand nineteen or. I guess you guys nine ninety. Or oh my, how many, what community development, I guess, BD. Question I have is that, which is about being man, funding, money. Two um individuals on here, um one got eighty four thousand for counseling. Uh for for this organization, and the other one is you, executive director. Got seventy three thousand five hundred. So I know this is a nonprofit organization, but as the executive, as you just said, um. You got seventy three thousand five hundred, so how did that come to be if um? If it's not a profit um entity and in your taxes that you guys file. Um the two of you guys have gotten seventy three thousand five hundred.
You mean to pay from HDB? Right.
Yeah. But isn't that part of your organization that you the executive director? A nonprofit or for profit?
Well, actually, it should be president and CEO rather than executive.
Well, it has on, it's on the tax.
Right. So that's what the nonprofit paid you.
But did you just say earlier, or that um nonprofit is a nonprofit, it's not paid?
No, but you have to have somebody, employees or.
That's what they was asking, so you didn't tell them that you're an employee. The way, what, how you got the seventy three thousand?
Because of the work I did.
For the nonprofit?
For the nonprofit, right.
Okay, so you're the nonprofit CEO and then.
Right.
You get paid.
Right. Cause a nonprofit, you know, they have to enter into a whole bunch of contracts, especially in our developments. And so there there's a lot of work involved in running this particular nonprofit, in fact, in fact, uh you know, I'm actually. Pretty underpaid, if you wanna ask me, I mean, guys in the.
I'm I'm not asking any of that, because my two colleagues just was asking you about anything, and you just said, oh, I understand the nonprofit. Every nonprofit, people get paid.
Yeah.
But there was, there was asking a question about the profit, but then, no, you said, you said clearly, you said. Nonprofit is a nonprofit, and they get paid, but then the nonprofit paid you for the work.
Yeah.
But then you didn't clarify it to none of my colleagues, that you did get paid doing work for the nonprofit.
Well, you know, I I work for the nonprofit, so they pay me, they pay the bills to keep the lights on, they pay for maintenance of the. Uh industrial park, they they do a lot of different things, uh we have staff, Patty Barbie gets paid, her daughter uh. You know, is also getting paid, uh it's just out of running the nonprofit. I mean, I don't see anything evil about that, I mean, they're paid for it.
Again, don't assume anything that I'm assuming, I'm not assuming anything was illegal, I just had asked you the question.
Okay.
And my two colleagues was asking, especially Senator Jared was asking, that never came up, that um. Well, the nonprofit, because you said it three times, a nonprofit is a nonprofit.
Okay.
Thank you, okay, so let's let's go to, move around over here for the, on your uh. Your uh, you talked about uh um. The decapitated, you know, those broken up houses you said, right? So in your resume, you talk about two thousand and three, two thousand and four, that they described that twenty three families renovations of their homes. He said the order of funding was through Nahaza.
Part of, yeah.
Yeah, so did did you meet your expectations on the funding source?
Uh, that was a very, very difficult project, uh I think we were short two houses. And we decided to move on, started, we moved our focus on to the Non-Akuli Village Center, felt it'd be a lot more productive doing. You know, forty eight houses and the cultural learning center, a bunch of stuff.
No, if you have conversations, go outside, please, sorry to press you here, yeah, sorry, sorry.
So she's asking something about.
Okay, so sorry. Okay, yes, yes. Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, so uh, you said that the someone that came from the house, what was the total funding for the uh twenty three family of the houses?
I I I can get you that information, I don't I don't know off the top of my head.
Because on top of some of the documents that we got. But uh I guess you guys, nonprofit, uh because the expansion had a shortfall, email on the. He said he described that he was running out of money and needed to modify the expansion of the. So out of the twenty three houses, fifteen was done, and on the fifteen houses. One that you came back to the Department of Hawaiian Homes to ask you can double, so each house was about a fifteen thousand dollars. Per house in renovation, and then you had come back and asked the Department of Hawaiian Homes, because he was coming to the end of your um agreement. That you needed to double up on one of the houses, because they have a multifamily in there, so you had to do thirty thousand allotment for that house. So, um. How come, I mean, what I wanna know, he asked me, how how he was running out of time, what was the reason why he was running out of time, the money had a time stamp on him? Or um you you just couldn't finish the project?
Well, the um, when we increased the fifteen to thirty, that was to help the the family, uh you know. Not, it wasn't a repair, it was actually a replacement, and we actually replaced the home, so that money assisted and reduced the. I guess the permanent loan that remained outstanding, so the whole idea was to make the numbers work for that particular family, and that's how we did it.
The reason why I'm asking, because um after those uh fifteen, I mean, you can you can supply that the centers later.
Sure.
But there was a uh money left over from the twenty five or whatever houses that you had asked. Um DHHL or Nahaza for the money, there was some money left over, so that's why I'm asking you, did you really run out of money? Or you ran out of time, or both?
Well, we actually did more than fifteen, I believe we did either twenty one or twenty three.
Only like to what DHHL, that's the last one of the documents that I had request.
Right.
That they gave me.
No, we actually did more. Yeah, we did more, but with respect to the funding of the Nahaza, I think what happened was we had to return it, because we decided, you know. We had gone through like four thousand on the list, and that's how we, it was a very difficult project in getting participants. Because most of the participants that uh we had to bypass, and they was just very dysfunctional, we had a very difficult time in. You know, you had fractionated ownership, you had guys that uh had a lot of different problems and couldn't qualify for loans and. So we we stayed with it, I gotta say it was the most difficult, but we got that done, and then at the time where we terminated that initiative. We returned whatever money we had left, and again, we didn't make any profits on this particular project, and then we focused in on the Non-Akuli Village Center.
Okay, but can you lead on, give us that information?
Sure.
Did you guys start off at fifteen thousand per house, or was it five thousand?
I don't remember the exact amount, but uh, you know, there's part of it was.
Fifteen thousand and thirty, because I know you guys did want that you guys. Okay, yeah, I mean, I can, you too, some other questions from other senators, I have, I have more.
Thank you, um totally appreciate you coming before, and I will echo the. Um appreciation of you willing to step up, because it's a very difficult task, and I think DHHL chair is probably the most difficult. A lot of our testimony, a lot of the concern are raised all about transparency, and uh my colleagues have have raised that concern. I can appreciate what you're talking about, and uh Senator Ikhara. Questions about that transparency and wearing different hats, I think many of us do, I wear many hats. Trying to get things done, but it comes back to the transparency and what we're getting done, and this is Hawaii. If you're in business here long enough, you know a lot of people, and it's those relationships that helps get those businesses done, but. Under the public trust, you cannot profit with that.
Sure.
And uh you and I had some real good conversations, and I think there is a a way for. What we're trying to do, what DHHL must do is get Hawaiians into homes. And so from your perspective, from your vision, what kind of timeline do you see, we have six hundred million dollars, or DHHL has six hundred million dollars. How are you seeing, how quickly can we implement this, where are we going with this, what in your mind, what do you see coming before? The um, you're a developer, you've done this well, you you've worked with DHHL before, what do you, what's your vision with that? How are we gonna implement?
Well, the first thing I would do, well, there's a bunch of things I would do, but uh, you know, I'm working within within the parameters of the. Strategic plan that was adopted by the commission, so there's twenty projects uh involving about twenty seven hundred units. Uh fifteen of them are for vertical construction, others are for farm lot infrastructure. So my plan is to consolidate uh to the where I can. So my plan is to consolidate uh to the where I can on these particular uh identified projects that the commission has approved. And similar to like the Hawaii Public Housing Authority, they put out an R F Q. It kind of lays out the qualifications that are needed and do these types of projects. There's this for ten thousand houses. Obviously, I'm gonna break it up into the different specific projects identified uh by the commission and in the strategic plan. Then we're gonna, my plan is to every two weeks, put out an R F Q for the different projects. And the projects, I'm gonna kind of consolidate them rather than making them small, you know, chunks. Because uh by consolidating them and also mandating the developer to develop it in a way. And this, I think, is a new approach whereby we don't bypass anybody on the waitlist. So we're gonna, I'm gonna require the developer to do four different models. One is uh what do you call it? Uh vacant lots, the owner building that wants to do that. Also set set aside some lots for the Habitat for Humanity and the self-help, like the Cordyceae and the Keith Kottles of the world. And then with respect to the lower income guys on the waitlist, we're gonna do the light tech rent to own or option to purchase approach. That was used in Kapua in which uh you have to be a certain low income in order to participate in the program. But uh what what's good about that is the person doesn't have to qualify for this huge mortgage. He just gotta be low income. And by doing it that way, we'll get those that have typically been bypassed. But the good thing about that particular approach uh that was used in Ho'ouli Ma'lima as well as in La'upua is that those individuals, while they're tenants in the initial period when the tax credits are written off, eventually get converted into homeowners or homesteaders. So they're then taken off the waitlist. I'm gonna kind of tweak that approach by making and issuing a a homestead lease right up front. They're not gonna have to wait the fifteen years to have a homestead interest, which they can pass on to their successors. By doing it that way, will help those on the bottom of the list that had typically been bypassed. And the third model involves the gap group, the guys between sixty and a hundred percent A M I. We're gonna subsidize the the mortgages, we're gonna provide uh different funding approaches. I've met with three different financial institutions and it's a way we can do, we'll uh use us uh departments enhance uh credit worthiness authority as well as use this five oh one C three bonds that are especially for these kind of projects. So we'll we'll address the the gap group. And then the the normal group, which is a turnkey. Uh, you know, guys that can qualify for the mortgage that will continue to use that project. We also uh, so anyway, on the twenty projects, we're gonna do that. And we're gonna just every two weeks pumping out these uh R F Qs that identify uh developers that can get them started. And then by doing that, we'll we'll kind of, I believe, meet that deadline. But the thing about it, though, by using these different funding approaches, it will actually free up a lot of them six hundred million for other purposes, such as acquiring good lands. Uh we've been, I've been talking personally with a bunch of different uh elite trusts and they have lands that we might be able to develop. Uh talking started with Oha and some others. So it's exciting time in a sense, the department not only can use its funds to acquire uh these particular lands, but we, which is even more important, the department has authority to use its automatic entitlements to bypass a lot of the delays that typical developers like me in the private sector experience and have to overcome before we can even put the shovel in the ground to get the construction started. So it's a really exciting time regarding not only the funding. Uh we're also gonna create a permitting section. Because that has been a big, big problem with the different department plannings and permitings at the different county. But we're gonna take on that uh responsibility that we're entitled to assert and use that to move our projects along a lot quicker. And then we're also gonna do some other stuff, but uh, you know, the short answer is that.
Um, and I really appreciate what you're saying because obviously you've given us a lot of thought and got a different portfolio on how to approach some of these things. Timeline, when, you know, the recurrent thing that we hear, it takes forever, we don't hear on the on the um waitlist, when do you think we'll actually be seeing action on this plan?
Well, there's action already. Uh the department has, from what I understand, spent some money for some infrastructure. Uh I believe the Punani project on Maui with Everdaling, they received some funding for some of the infrastructure using that money. So that one is moving forward. I believe uh Everett is gonna maybe uh uh move forward on that this year. But let me also emphasize, uh one of the things that is gonna be changed by the department is typically the department uh makes awards after everything is in place, after people qualify for loans and so forth. I don't wanna do that. What I wanna do is uh have the developer, pick a developer, he's gonna do the construction, he's gonna all that. It's gonna take a year and a half, two years. But in the interim and and parallel with that process, the department is gonna be very active in awarding leases upfront. You know, we're gonna make lease awards so that we don't have this kalima situation where people are dying. And more sadly, their heirs aren't able to take their place on the waiting list and what have you. So we're gonna eliminate that by making awards upfront. And during that uh concurrent activity that the developer is doing, we'll categorize these individuals, we do a screening, figure out what category they fit in, the gap group, the turnkey, the rent to own, light tech, or the they wanna owner build, work with Habitat or whatever. And by doing that, we will not bypass anybody on the waitlist, but more importantly, we'll get the leases out. And so I gotta really upgrade and uh fill out all those vacancies, bring on more people. We're looking at upgrading the technology regarding waitlists and digitizing, all kind of really good stuff. So uh there's a lot that has to be done. Uh so I'm excited about it. Uh we're we're excited about it. And hopefully the, you can see the results that you guys have mandated me to do in a very short period of time.
Right. Um, financing, now you're talking about the turnkey financing. There's been a big question about getting enough funding, not not from D H H L, but from the um beneficiary standpoint. Do you have a plan in getting that in place? Because I know that's been struggling at some point and there's the concern about Bank of America and all that. What's your plan there?
Well, you know, in doing a quick assessment of the department, uh I discovered that there's about forty-eight million that's just sitting uh in the department. There's also another hundred thirty million from the original six hundred million dollars sitting in the department. Uh there's also the Nahaza funds that just recently twenty-two point three million was awarded. I talked to Senator Schatz, I said we need more money because the Nahaza money, you can do the one eighty-four A loans. Uh so all these funding uh or loan products and assets are just sitting there. So uh last year, I think direct loans, the department did eleven for the whole year. But at the same time, there was very little development that was happening. So there are a lot of funding sources. I've talked to some of the C D F Is, they have funds that they can make available. Uh there's R D, there's HUD, there's all kind of other funding sources that have never been tapped into or have been, but marginally in most cases by the department. As we develop these uh projects with our developers, as we prepare the people that are coming off the waitlist, we're gonna have to also kind of collaborate and work with all these different funding sources. And the plan is to bring in a lot of third-party loan processors, because the department itself can work. That's the reality. And so we have to change the operation of the department to be more active in working with these different groups.
Okay, uh this policy stuff, now a little bit closer to home. I have two uh large Hawaiian home area in my district, um infrastructure in that area.
Yeah, I remember talking about that.
Yeah, uh big deal. Specifically, right near my main town, right near um, we call it Wa'aka stream, but I think it's actually Waikoloa. There's been a development area that's been sitting there for a dozen years. Are you familiar with that area? Do you know what I'm talking about?
I'm familiar with that.
Okay. That thing's been sitting there. The infrastructure, my understanding, is there, but we don't move forward. And it's been tangled up. Do you have plans on getting at that one? Have you had enough time to look into that?
Uh well, and I I saw, I mean, I was uh met with David Parnas uh from that uh that area and he showed it to me. And that was kind of startling, all the, you know, infrastructure is in, it's just sitting there. And so uh I don't know if it, and I gotta investigate it, but we'd definitely be moving forward on that one, because that's ridiculous that it's sitting there. And if it's a HUD uh problem with getting financing, we'll do our own financing, but we'll get it done. That that's a ridiculous situation, sitting there unused.
For a dozen years, maybe longer.
We can't have that happen.
Okay, um I can keep asking questions, but Chair, I'm gonna turn it over because, thank you.
Can I just make a quick fun announcement? Um there's some refreshments, um some some compliments of Senator Favela and myself. Some pizzas and I'm sure what kind of foods there are, but if if anybody's hungry, you know, I can go out the door. Our Sergeant Aris Ben can show you, there's this minority caucus room, so please help yourself to refreshments and some food. Yeah, 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 yeah. I I we have pizza, there may be some bentos and I'll just snack, so help yourselves, audience, everyone. Yeah, Senator Kilkoway.
Uh, thank you, Colleen. So to follow up on Senator Richard's questions, you know, you you mentioned a number of different approaches. And my immediate concern with your explanations are the lack of capacity in your
Right.
existing organization, which you just, which you just referenced. And you mentioned in your opening remarks, restructuring the department's suboptimal organization. Can you describe what you mean by that and what you plan to do about it?
Yeah, during this period awaiting getting this job, I've met with all the division heads at the department. We broke out the org charts and we identified the positions that were fulfilled. But more importantly, we identified the positions that weren't filled, whether civil service or contract hires. And so uh we put together a game plan, I've met with the A S O as well as the governor's A S O to move that along. Uh that is very, very crucial to the functionality and effectiveness of the department. All these vacant positions, it's ridiculous. So that's gonna definitely be a priority for me. But beyond that, it's also the idea that if we're gonna do these developments, we're gonna have to bring on people that can facilitate that. So I've already talked to a bunch of different individuals that I plan on bringing on uh in contract capacity. And so I'm excited about that, but I recognize that the existing uh situation at the department, there's no way. We don't have the capacity as is to do all this stuff I'm talking about.
So that's mostly workforce in nature. Do you plan to reorganize the structure of the department?
Uh, yeah, I am.
In in what ways?
Well, I got a permitting division. I want uh, you know, my own permitting division so I can issue permits in a timely fashion. I want.
So those are intended to be.
I'm sorry.
Do those are intended to replicate county, county permits that uh you would otherwise need to apply for if you did not have the statutory authority that the department has.
That's correct.
You know, optimal infrastructure, the the department does carry a lot of ongoing uh infrastructure liability that normally is dedicated to the county.
Right.
And the counties have in the past, you know, um.
Refuse to take.
Refuse to take departmental infrastructure, in part because they hadn't gone through county permitting processes. So your your intention with that, with that new office would be to replicate the type of standards that counties require, just to do it yourself?
Well, at the same time, you know, when you look at some of the county ordinances, um especially in rural areas that have sidewalks and curbs. And I I got a question whether that's a really should be required and we 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 have the right to, uh you know, uh eliminate those. Of course, the size of the roads, the drainage, that's something else. Because that's what we're talking about, the maintenance. And we'll work with the department or the different counties to see if we can have a meeting of the minds. My my plan is to also partner with the the uh different counties, especially on infrastructure that's needed. I think we have access to more uh funding for infrastructure that I think both entities could benefit from. I mean, I've identified areas where they have housing needs, whereas we have also housing needs as well as other kind of things that we're gonna put in. So the idea is to maybe access those funds and then maybe have the county uh maintain the new infrastructure. But it's gonna be a a working relationship with those guys. It's it's not like I'm gonna operate in a vacuum or a fishbowl. That's the only way, especially when you gotta hook up with their infrastructure, you you gotta be working with those guys.
Right, that's the basis of the question. Thank you.
Okay, I actually have a few questions on, just gonna give you a chance to um expand on, you know, the Holly Wa'kana or Nanakuli project. Um, uh, I know, I think initially when you're talking about that project or maybe the association, there was talk about kupuna housing. Um, but my understanding is now it's not limited to kupuna. So if you can maybe explain what what happened there, was it was gonna be kupuna initially, but it shifted?
Yeah, it it shifted because when we did a market study, we found that there wasn't sufficient uh I guess, uh demand, especially for the three bedrooms that we were building. And so that was more geared towards the large families and there seemed to be a bigger demand for that. So in collaboration with the Nanakuli Homestead Community Association, that change was made. I mean, the original idea was to put kupuna on the commercial upfront, and that also didn't make sense. So we did it in the back. Uh we uh the half of the units of the forty-eight are three bedrooms and there's a, you know, maybe a third of two bedrooms and a couple, uh what do you call it, one bedrooms.
Um, and I'm also very happy to hear about what's your your plans, you know, about trying to really avoid having people die on the waitlist.
Right.
Um, but you know, my understanding is that the current way that the rules are promulgated for D H H L is that it's an order of um application. And so even if someone's number, you know, twenty-five thousand, but if they get diagnosed with cancer or something and they're gonna six months to live, right now, under the rules, there's not a way for them to jump ahead, you know, and I know that that's a big um question, because it's a matter of fairness to people in front versus people who are about to die or someone who might be ninety years old or something. And so I guess I'm just wondering, you know, because I think with the six hundred million, I think the projection was we might be able to build three hundred, three thousand or so homes. Um, is there any chance that you might consider, you know, allowing those who might be, you know, elderly or terminally ill to have priority? So they don't lose the place on the waitlist? Or is there a mechanism for that or?
Well, I I think part of the uh solution to that, especially if you have somebody in that condition, is for us to start building kupuna housing. And so we have a uh six different sites that we've identified. One in particular, uh in your neighborhood, uh next to the One Night Conference of Health Center. We have some, uh we've done some master planning with that group. And so the idea is to put kupuna housing adjacent to the the center, because then you have all the services needed for the person to age in place. And so the idea is uh not only to build the kupuna housing, but also have another tower of students and workforce as well as faculty adjacent. And so that that's another project that we're looking at. But the the way I'm gonna tweak that is that uh we're gonna uh give an award. Uh what we'll do is on the high rise, similar to what we're gonna, uh you know, I've been talking to Sanford Carr regarding the Bola Drone. So we're gonna try and tweak that one also, whereby um, you know, we'll start having homesteads of condominiums. You know, not not all Hawaiians gotta have a three, four bedroom house, especially on the elderly. Condo would be more than adequate and something that uh they would love to have. And so that one, we're gonna uh separate the vertical construction from the ground and issue a undivided homestead lease to the person on the waitlist. And kupuna, you know, is fine. And so they will be able to move into that project. Uh and in part, we'll use the tax credits to help subsidize it, but separate it and do a C P R of the units so that they can be treated as a, you know, and available to this kind of funding. But at the same time, the homesteader becomes a homesteader and he's taken off the waitlist, whether he's a kupuna or whatever. But uh we're gonna look to do that, possibly in the Everdaling, not Everdaling, but Sanford Carr's project. And so he has two hundred eighty-four or two hundred seventy-eight, excuse me, units. We can take that number off of the waitlist by changing the approach in the wards. Rather than being treated as renters, they become homesteaders.
Oh, terrific. Um, and I guess the other question I have is that, you know, I I've talked about this before, I we met one on one is I was contacted by a woman and it's a very sad story, you know, where she, her mother recently passed away after being on the waitlist for a couple decades. And then she herself is in her seventies. Um, and the way that D H H L handles that now is that um they put a notice out in a hundred eighty days um time that successors or heirs can claim that person's place on the waitlist. Um, so, but when she and her siblings tried to call D H H L, they said that because they're only twenty-five percent, they can't claim their mother's place. Um, and so, um you know, so I guess it just seems so unfair, you know, and when she testified, we have a bill, you know, that's trying to see if we're gonna address that somehow. see if we're gonna address that somehow, and saying that people whose relatives already died, is there some way that they can claim their place on the waitlist? And, you know, she talked about how it just seems like it's unequal treatment. You know, because for those who get a lease, you can then pass it on to someone who's up twenty-five percent. But for those who are on the waitlist, if you die, you, you know, you're, the only people who can claim your place have to be fifty percent. And so I don't know if there's any way that DHHL can try to help someone like her. You know, it's, it's not an easy question to answer, but if it's something that's, and I, so I was really glad that you read that quote about the Kalima case, all nine hundred have already died. What happens to their successors?
Right, and that situation you're describing, that's a Kalima case situation.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So they get compensated, but again, you know, the problem is if their successors are twenty-five percent, they don't, they don't get anything. So that, that is a very, very sad situation. I think that would require congressional action to reduce the initial awards and lower it to the twenty-five percent. That's gonna be a challenge, especially based on the politics and the position of the fifty percenters. But that's something that, you know, needs to be considered. When I was talking to Representative Takuta about it, she mentioned that she just introduced a bill where to reduce the successorship to one thirty-second. So, you know, that, that doesn't help that situation, but the bigger situation, I, I don't think she was in the congressional delegation, I don't think is prepared to reduce that initial award to twenty-five percent. Because you got twenty thousand seven hundred on the waitlist now, so what do those guys do?
But I guess, you know, this woman, all she's asking for is just that their, their waitlist place be reserved. Don't lose that, you know.
But that's, that's why one of the things that I wanna do is make the awards out early.
Yeah.
Upfront, as, as we start to identify projects, we put out the notice, say, Kupulei, we got eight hundred units we're gonna award, who's interested? Come down, sign up, then we do a, a quick analysis of your financial situation. We categorize you, and then when the thing is done, you already be processed, have a loan in place and ready to go, and you've identified your lot once the thing is finished.
Yeah.
Can I ask about that?
Okay. Let me, yeah, one more than you can.
Okay, no, I have it on that one.
Okay, but same, actually me too. And so I'm excited to hear that you're talking about doing your own permitting and that kind of thing, because I have a friend that, you know, his, his dad, after waiting for decades, you know, finally got on, onto a lease. But because they're low income, they had a, they applied for a VA loan and also helped from Habitat for Humanity. And he was terminally ill. And what they were told was that until the building permits were approved, the, the loan couldn't be finalized. And until the loan was finalized, it's, even though they were already given a lot, you know, and they were saying until the loans finalize, his name doesn't actually go on it, or he's not actually technically considered to be a LSC yet. And so what they were told is that if his dad died before the building permits went through, then actually the whole family would lose that. And so hopefully under your new system that you're talking about,
Yeah, we don't like that permit, yeah.
Okay.
Plus we'll, we'll, you know, that, that's a problem with the DPP, the issuance of that permit that you're talking about takes forever. I've had projects that we've worked on where it's almost gone under because, you know, we couldn't close our finance because we didn't have the permit and HHFTC was requiring that. So it, it's a very difficult situation. I, I know Blangiardi's got some great ideas and, you know, I kinda wanna check out how they're approaching that. But the idea is for the department to issue their own permit. I mean, in accordance to the building code and with certain exceptions, but that is the idea. And so your situation that you've described, if the permit had been issued in a timely fashion, or, you know, maybe our loan process, maybe he shouldn't do a VA. Maybe he needs to use one of our loans, where that's not subject to having the issuance of a permit as an issue.
Yeah, very good. Senator Harrow, what do you have?
Is it possible to issue a permit or a lease retroactively? Particularly if there was a permit already in place and but some external organization did, or the financing didn't come through? But, and then the person died, is there a way to backdate it? For those, you know? Yeah, for, because it was, well, you have to set up a policy ahead of time. That if, if it already happened, then you, you know, but under a narrow, narrow situation, because I'm thinking about how do you address this?
Yeah.
Because there's no, you know, especially if it's no, to no fault of their own.
Yeah.
Why should they be denied that? So that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do whatever we can within the parameters of the law. So backdating stuff, I, I think we might run into trouble on that, so. I don't want any of my workers to go to jail or anything.
Or predate.
Oh, predate?
You can predate it and then subject to the external factors, and if they fall through and the person dies, then the predate holds.
Well, that, that's why I like the idea of just issuing the lease upfront. And then we'll figure out if what category of financing you're gonna use. I'd rather do it that way, then I don't have to predate, I date and you're it.
Good luck.
Senator Favela?
Well, why don't you just give them the land so they can make their own loan? Another question. Anyway, getting back to some of your, your, um, wait, I'm for that. Anyway, getting back to some of your questions was asked, and you talked about a couple of things that still concerning me. One of them was the Miley project that you was doing, which is a great idea. But you had some kind of couple of hiccups over there with the Clean Water Act from the Department of, on the thing being, I guess, contamination, so-called going in the water, and I guess they cited that project. But one of them was, it concerned me, I know that you, you wanna do this, and which I, which I, I'm doing the same thing for the, for the schools and infrastructure, I have a bill actually to have the state have their own Department of Planning and Permitting. And the suggestion was two things, three things actually. Going to Hawaiian homes, running Department of Transportation. And the other one was, it's gonna go there and that's the better. So what I'm saying is, in, in that project, did you get cited or did you get called on the city and county, and you know, the city and county, but it was late, you know, like. But the question was raised in the DHHL files that I got, that the Department of Planning and Permitting came out and said that your permit was not valid, not in sense that it was expired, but that you had no valid permit. And you elaborate a little bit on that, because I know that's your concern.
Yeah, they had the wrong permit number, and it's a bad to, that they go down and get it fixed, and then a new permit was issued for the trenching.
Thank you, because that, that they, they didn't provide that answer, that's the reason I'm asking that question. Now coming to the parcel that you're talking about, why not comprehensive? At one time, Commissioner, I was gonna tell her, was very concerned, was the, the Department, what is his name, the governor, well, he was lieutenant governor at the time, Josh Green. And some other people, I guess, you two, Kamakee, whoever, went to the parcel and they was gonna build doctor and nursing housing on that parcel that you're talking about now. And I'm glad you're changing your, your, your view, because that was concerning from the commissioner, and she brought that up in commission hearing. The reason why I say that is that it's great that you guys are gonna do that, kona, and, and all of that, but going forward, these are the things that, it, it is questions going forward, because no matter how much, Colleen, no matter how much I try, close my eyes and separate all of this, and, and it's probably my personal issue, how I see Robin Danner. And you say what you say, maybe you believe, you don't believe, but there's a lot of projects in there, Robin Danner's stamp already on previous year. Other one is Nani Maderis. There's a lot of things that is happening that is gonna coincide, whether you say it's not conflict now, but how can we guarantee, things that you're gonna go forward, it's not gonna have anything to do with the housing, because right now, that's what the governor's plan is. And that's the plan that he had introduced to Ikaika. That's what the plan that he told to Tyler Gomes. So I'm pretty sure he never said, hold you out on him, and I know you're a little bit different kind of guy, that you don't take orders just from anybody, but the point that I'm getting at is that these guys are the puppeteers. And I'm saying you're a puppet, but it comes to question, why so quickly your name came up? Because had other people applied and even got interviewed, never was considered. And don't get me wrong, and I go, what about your background? Fine, you have the background to do it, but the other people had the capacity of doing the same thing and serving on the highest scale, but it was never called, it never was even told that Ikaika was gonna get the position. So that's my concern, if they had fitted, if they had went and said to the subject chair or even anybody in this building, besides making a, all the decisions up there, not notifying anybody, that that was the decision that they was gonna make. They did, they didn't. So that's why, I'm, I'm not saying you have to answer that. But I'm just saying, a lot of stuff that you're speaking to us today, I seen this previously, when I first got here in my office, at the time, Robin Danner, all of her rent-to-own, and being native Hawaiian, being an Indian, all that kind of stuff, and I'm saying that you're doing that. But I just see some of the stuff that you're saying, I heard it before from another person. So I'm just saying, I'm not saying you are duplicating it, because maybe it is a good idea. But my concern is how far, how far is the relationship? Are you gonna be able to separate yourself to the trusts and to the beneficiaries from the governor? I'm not saying don't listen to the governor, tell the governor, stick it like Ayla did. But I'm asking you, if you go forward, how much independence that the governor gonna give you? And not going forward and being, being Kahali homes, that's gonna be a little shack for our Hawaiians. You want something that's gonna be good for them. I, I, I don't have nothing with the condos, it's great ideas, but to me, we are calling homestead, but it's subdivisions. Nanakuli is a homestead, because they have the acres of what Prince Koolheal trusts. Everything else that is being built now, Series Seven, Rishkano, Apole, are subdivisions. Okay, so I like know, why are we continuing to build subdivisions and going into that direction? And when did the vision of the Department of Hawaiian Homes change? Was it under when you was there or previous to you to change and not give everybody an acre or half acre or more land? Can you?
Uh, well, you know, over the years, trust has been in existence of over a hundred years. So that has kinda evolved. And I think when you look at the fact that you got over twenty-eight thousand, probably, you know, and, and that's just the listed group. I mean, when you look at the whole Native Hawaiian population, there's a lot more, and just like when I was developing, the waiting list went up, went from three thousand to seven thousand, and I anticipate the same thing is gonna happen as we start getting active. But with respect to the vision, I think that vision needs to evolve, and I think Prince Koolheal would understand. We have, we're in the twenty-first century. We have a limited resource regarding land. So we need to get a little bit more creative in what's rather than the acre lot, which is really to me inappropriate when you got so many other people waiting. So that's why smaller lots are more appropriate, I think townhouses are doable. I think, you know, condos are excellent, I think transitional rentals, especially for those that don't, are not prepared to become homesteaders, to at least temporarily get housed rather than being homeless in a facility that will not only provide him the, the safety of a place to live at affordable rent, but more importantly, the services that they need to prepare themselves for homeownership, for a homestead award. And in addition, you know, and I know some of you guys don't like it, but I think the ADU, the Ohana Unit, using other funds, not the two seventy-nine, the Nahazas is ripe for use, to empower the homesteaders to put this additional unit that can serve as maybe their house and then rent out the, you know, the bigger house to a family. But I like that, I tried that way back before, you know, Robin Danner did their homes and was unsuccessful because the rules didn't accommodate that. But I anticipate having that move forward. I also wanna be very aggressive in all the vacant lots, as well as the dilapidated ones. We're gonna, you know, set some money aside. Once we figure out what the story is as to why that lot is vacant or dilapidated houses is on there, if we can, rather than using a hammer and contest a case hearing to threaten cancellation, I, I'm actually bringing on a Kahu to help facilitate finding out what the problem is and figuring out a more humane and compassionate solution to that problem. But we kinda have all these, you know, dilapidated housing, just kinda making the neighborhood very deteriorated looking. So we gotta address that, we gotta address all these lots that are just not awarded. Why aren't they awarded? I mean, that's a slam dunk, award them out. Again, it goes to the personnel, the lack of sufficient staff, as well as the process, and that I gotta change, so we're gonna, we're gonna do that.
Okay, thank you. Chair, get this one right here. Okay, so now that you said this, and I've been listening for a while, you're very akamai in certain things. So I like know on your questionnaire, was asked to describe your strengths and weaknesses. And you described, you know, you're not well versed in the current problems at DHHL and weakness beneficiaries.
And not current, uh, sorry?
That's what you said on your questionnaire, your weaknesses is not being well versed on the current problems on DHHL and the waitlist beneficiary.
Well, I gotta retract that, because
Tractor, because you know what, you very much is akamai in what's going on. I didn't understand, why did you, why did you answer? You just described the whole problem
Right, right.
From the time you was there to now, so.
Well, from the time I sent that to the time today, I've been very active in talking to all the commissioners, talking to all the staff, talking to the waitlisters as well as existing homesteaders to educate myself. So I, I think I'm, you know, a lot more akamai, if you wanna characterize it that, regarding the problems, and you know, I've met with the planning office and the individual over there, very, very akamai, so. We got some good people at the department that I'm gonna really depend on, because I can't learn everything, you know, so I need that, that help, and, but I also need to bring on more people, so. I, I'm not, I, I have to change that answer.
Okay, thank you for that, okay. Well, my major areas of concern, and I, I know you, you probably heard about this already, and I, and I made sure that, you know, that he was prepared so that you'd have one, but anyway, so regarding the license hold on the five acre parcel since two thousand and four DHHL, documents described that you have been a delinquent in the rental payment with an amount of hundred thirty-six thousand plus. What was the esteemed amount of revenue that were collected on the money on that parcel?
Well, we, total, I think, was, I think it was four hundred thousand for that particular year, but you know, in the, and we, we gave approximately half of it to the department, the rest we used to keep the lights on at our nonprofits as well as maintain the place, so.
Because on that property, you receive about forty thousand dollars a month. And then the question is, why was a delinquent on the rental payment since two thousand and eight? And why did you make the payment in full on February twenty-fourth? After I had requested in February twenty-three, the documents from DHHL.
Well, that one, you know, that was a disputed amount, because they retroactively charges a hundred twenty thousand basically for that increase. I mean, we had been invoiced, we had paid current and we're current, and all of a sudden, when we migrated and we finished the Nanakuli Village Center, I unilaterally increased the rent five thousand and felt that was appropriate. But when I made that payment, they sent me a bill for two years of past rent and then made us delinquent, which I disputed from the standpoint that we should have continued to receive that discount because no longer were we working on the replacement homes, we're now working on the Nanakuli Village Center. So I felt it was justified, so I was prepared to dispute it and was gonna bring in a third party mediator to see what, what is in fact the right decision. But I felt, well, you know what, I gotta pay it, because I don't want any dispute regarding delinquent rent jeopardizing what I gotta do. I don't want anybody looking at me like, oh, Colleen, he's favoring his nonprofit. So we just paid it, because what I gotta do is too important to have that issue outstanding.
Okay, the only reason, one other question, one of the emails that I got from DHHL in, I guess, in November or December, you had an email that you emailed to, and, and now you kinda explained it, but I just wanna just let, let, let what the email said. The email said that you had asked Ayla to see you again, to work on that, and that's what you
Right, that's what I'm talking about, it's disputed.
Okay, and then going forward, throughout the same license agreement, DHHL dated February four, two thousand and nineteen. Chair at the time owed you to vacate the parcel, including conditions of hazardous material evaluation. Conditions of hazardous material in their uh, uh, evaluation. Why did the chair, the chairperson in the, in that area, attorney general at that time wanted you to vacate the parcel? And what actions did you take at the time? And what happened with the subtenant?
Yeah, what we did was uh, you know, the uh. There were some environmental issues where the roll offs are, you know, screwing up the place. So we got rid of them, canceled their lease. Uh, we started to mitigate, we brought in uh, we did some remediation work. And then more currently, we brought in a, a special uh consultant to help oversee the, those efforts to maintain the. You know, the, and, and remember, this is an industrial park. So it's, you know, it's a certain level that you can, can expect uh, regarding. Certain activities in there that will maybe put at risk some of the uh, the parcels from an environmental standpoint. So we've been very active in getting rid of those that have uh, you know, been flagrant about uh, misuse of the property. And then we also are getting on, in fact, we're looking at uh, canceling uh, one indiv- or uh, subtenant that is guilty of that kind of activity. Uh, but we are taking steps to uh, uh, mitigate that situation and using a consultant that specializes in that.
Yes, D H H L dated March tenth, twenty twenty three. Um, you guys, I guess you have fees of the report on describing the parcel is now contaminated hazard material. The estimated cleanup for that parcel um, will be cost over about one point one million. Um, did the automotive business and uh, I guess the training class describing the resume result in the contamination? Or did you subten- subtenant activities contaminate the uh, property?
Well, the motor pool area, we uh, one of my uh, partners at the time. Uh, they expended quite a bit of money to fix that up and turn it over to Kapole for at-risk kids that wanna learn about fixing cars and stuff. That's actually separate from our pro- uh, property. And then with respect to uh, some of the contamination you're talking about. You know, I don't, I, it's debatable uh, with respect to the costs of remediation and fixing the site. Now, you know, there's different approaches. One may say a million, I would say, well, you just cap it or, you know, it is an industrial park. So there's different ways. Uh, one of the things that why we're keeping it is we're committed to taking whatever. Re- uh, remediation steps to turn it back to the department when they actually are. Uh, receptive to that idea of turning it back. But in the meantime, we have brought in a consultant. We are. Uh, we've implemented a very aggressive uh, uh, plan and uh, monitoring with the existing sub tenants.
Well, the reason why I understand is because you had hired a environmental company to come and uh, do what the Department of Hawaiian Homeland. Had asked you. And during the process, when they gave you the results or gave the department and your nonprofit the results. Um, you let it go. And you never notified the department on their departure. And that was something that was very concerning for the department because as we speak now, the contamination that we're talking about. Is still there. And the price of the cleanup is getting higher. So my concern is. Um, as you stepping down, if you get confirmed and become the director. Uh, of the Department of Hawaiian Homeland, where does the, where does the liability go? For the cleanup of that parcel? Because it, it doesn't go upon that you're gonna have uh. A re, re, redo the parcel or i- is it um, the nonprofits gonna pay for the cleanup? Or is it the beneficiaries um, um, gonna pay for it? How is that gonna be uh, cleaned up? Cause it's still there.
Yeah, I, I've always uh, in my discussions with the department, committed to cleaning up that site. Uh, if to the extent that's needed. Now, the original consultant, uh, she didn't specialize in this kind of remediation. She just, you know, threw that out there. And so we brought in a specialist that did another environmental assessment and. And who has done other cleanups in Kapole and other sites, so that knows the business. And so that particular uh, uh Ford Inc. is, is very active in that type of uh, activity. So. We relying on that person to provide the guidance that's necessary. But there is no way that H C D B is trying to escape their responsibility. They're committed long term to making sure that thing is made right.
No, I wasn't trying to explain that. I, what I'm trying to explain is that um. I, I just concerned because now you're gonna be possibly director. I'm seeing that, that problem gonna go away and you can try hide them. I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm just concerned that how, how are we gonna get, um, so the department doesn't have it in here. So I wanna maybe lead on, you can send us. A document of the new person you and hire with the expertise. Because far as the workers that I had asked was uh, from five years. Earlier to present. And none of that dialogue would you just dialogue with me is in here. The only one that is in here is that the director. And uh, Halei, Halei.
Haleiya.
Yeah, oh no, Kepa, Kepa, sorry. Um, and some of the other home setters, uh, uh, uh. Members that tried to reach out, email, you know, back and forth against you or your, your, your helper, I mean, your, your nonprofit. Um, tried to encourage you to do the cleanup um, as soon as possible. And the concern was that, um, they wanted you to give them an inventory of all the improvements. You did over the years of the parcel, which they never got to present. And then the other concern is that, that right now as we speak. As you being the director or the chair or executive um, for your nonprofit, right now um, is being told. Um, now that you paid your back rent, that you are qualified now to go ahead and look for the forty three acre parcel. That's on, that is Hawaiian homeland. And the forty three person, acre parcel, most of us wouldn't know. Unless we know from inside, cause that never was out, that we have a forty three acre parcel possible or commercial. Does anybody want it? Because I'm gonna tell you why. Person is not here of a trucking company and trying to get that land. For the last five plus maybe years. Homesteader, husband and wife business, tried to get that parcel a long time. It was notified by Hawaiian Homes, that's how I got this information just recently, that you possibly. And your nonprofit is gonna get that parcel. Now, he is now paying hot two hundred fifty thousand a year. An officiating Hawaiian homesteader. Not you, but again, how is it possible that a homesteader that been trying to get a lot to. To, to move and then prosper being a homesteader and, and a businessman and a woman to get the property. And then now, all of a sudden, your nonprofit is applying to get the forty three um, acre lot in uh, Campbell.
Yeah, that, that particular lot, uh, in this public record, uh. We had, have been trying to acquire the nonprofit, has been trying to acquire that piece of property. For a very, very long time, way before this guy you're talking about. So there's a public record, there's commission actions. There's uh, different things that were required. We got a write entry, we did a archaeological site survey. We did a bunch of things. We, we uh, did some master deny uh, designing of the site, CPR layouts. Uh, we also approached a bunch of different native Hawaiian uh, companies that were interested in participating, becoming. And setting up businesses there, which we also have a list. So the idea is to, and also originally way back when we were trying to do it. Uh, we were gonna put in a P V, alternate energy uh, system in, on the site. Generate uh, electricity, not only for the tenants, but for the home setters. Uh, that fell through, uh, partly because of the. P P A that we're negotiating with Hawaiian Electric, uh, we just never read, were able to con- consummate it. So it, it, it might, or I guess transitioning into a uh, industrial park. Uh, with some alternate energy, a digester, a dis- dis- distribution uh, facility and some other things. Uh, which the, the idea is to provide places like the individual you're talking about. Uh, our nonprofit is prepared to uh, front the money to do the development, uh, in which. Not only will it provide an opportunity for us, a lot of native Hawaiian business guys that you're talking about. But more importantly, will generate income uh, on a piece of property that's just sitting, laying there. And uh, we've done a lot of work on that and uh, we've recruited a lot of participants. Um, even the, the homestead uh, organization that wants to put a crematorium next to Hawaii Camp. We were talking with her to see if she might consider moving there. Um, you know, there's, there's a lot of effort that has gone. Historically into that development. Uh, we've worked with the uh, department. They were prepared to issue a, a lease. Uh, way back and then, but the issue became, what is the benefits package? And so, you know, there was a, a layout, I believe it was either sixteen or eighteen million in uh, benefits that would be. Generated from the lease of this land and uh, could be used for uh, development of housing on D H H L. Uh, internship programs, uh, just a variety of uh, benefits package that the department or the commission had to look at. And uh, decide whether they wanted to move forward. There's, there's, there's a lot of work that has gone into that and uh. You know, that's something, if it does come before the commission, which I anticipate it will, I have to recuse myself from it.
The, the reason why I'm concerned, Kali, is because. You didn't pay your lease or your license rent because okay, okay, you, you have a, probably a valid um, argument. But. Is that fair? Because they talked to you numerous of times and that's the reason why they couldn't go forward. On the forty three acres. You did a lot of work, maybe you did. But it said the emails, it's saying, Kali. You have to pay your back rent, so we cannot move forward. It's in there in the D H H L documents. That we cannot go forward with this parcel until you pay your back rent. And that was one of the hell holdups. And now you're talking about this solar farm.
That's, that's off the table.
So it is off the table. But wasn't it a five acre parcel that you was looking at? Who, was it, wasn't, wasn't forty three acres, right?
Well, there's a five acre that we're using now. And that's the one that.
So have one documents in here that the thing didn't go through. It falls through, no five, five, five acre parcel, I found I mistaken it. He was doing the same thing and then you had the benefits package. And the benefits package was for a community package that was gonna be between. Fourteen to eighteen million, maybe. Could be the same, I don't know, one of them one. But the thing didn't go through. But they said it was five acres, not forty three acres.
Yes, forty three.
The benefit package, again, that you was pulling through and you told them that this is the benefit package that you have to do. And this is the entity you're gonna give it to. And then the entity was your nonprofit.
Well, again, the.
I mean, I know you're gonna do all these things with them, but you, you see what I'm saying? When, when it comes to these things, I mean, it's not like you're going in the community of Kapole. Hey, what else nonprofits we have that we can break this fourteen million down? Cause there's a lot. And how I know that is because that's what they do. That's the reason why I accused myself at the Lions Club Foundation, I stepped down. And the Lions Club uh, president. And I was the president for twenty years. I stepped down because I came and got this job and I didn't wanna have no conflict of interest in anything we're moving forward.
Right.
So I'm just saying, I'm not saying that it is, but that's what it, it seems.
Right.
That is, is that, is that.
That makes sense.
So, another reason why I say this is because, again, going back, um, when you was Department of um, Hawaiian Homes Chair. Parcel that I'm talking about in Kauai, you knew about it, and I consider families. Person burnt the house and died because he was back on his lease rent or his mortgage. Whatever the situation was that he was battling, the Department of Hawaiian Homes passionately. Since the eighties, since his house was erected, was leaking, falling apart, and had a few other people that was in with him back then. When they tried to kick him out in the, maybe the mid uh, eight, late eighties or mid, mid nineties. But then the, the judgment came not to evico. So now going forward, and what you're saying, and I'm glad you have that compassion that you have now, but I, I just like know, who made the decision? To go in there with the sheriffs and the evac, to evict this person with equipment to take all his belongings out. And store them or whatever you guys are gonna do with it. Who made the decision to go in there and evict this gentleman? Cause he has a check that was dated that he had submitted, cause he said he was tired of fighting with you guys. And he paid it and you guys returned it. So I just wanna know in what position that you had a role in um, this situation that we're talking about on Kauai.
Well, uh, that particular situation, I think it started in nineteen seventy seven. When uh, he took out, he got a loan and had a construction of the house. I think I was in the second year of law school at the time. Uh, it, you know, the uh, construction was defective. Uh, there were corner beads or uh, metal, so they started rusting out the iron, uh, metal roofs with the solder. Whole bunch of uh, design uh, areas as well as construction. The joists were spaced too far apart for. Home setters that are a lot heavier than uh, typical uh, buyers. So it, it, it was a long drawn out process. I did eventually get involved as a deputy A G. And I actually handled the litigation to go after these guys. And we got them to come in and do the repairs. With respect to uh, uh, Mr. Smith, and I, I gotta say, it was a very, very tragic. It's one of the most tragic. Events that I've ever experienced. I wasn't there, I wasn't on the big island at the time, so I wasn't a party to the eviction process. Uh, but it was on my watch, you know, when it happened. Unfortunately, it was something that had been trying to. Uh, the department tried to resolve, resolve over twenty years, two decades. And it, you know, they negotiated contest, contested case hearing. You know, went up to the Supreme Court twice. Uh, he got bounced on the last one because he filed uh, an appeal untimely. And so. The attorney generals with assistance of the deputies, along with the investigators at the A G moved on him. And it's just unfortunate that the guy, as his last act, decided to burn his house down. Uh, I, I don't know, I don't know the facts as to whether he was suicide or he just got overcome by the smoke. But the fact is, he did get, uh, he, he died. And no matter whatever, uh, I, I can say, it's just a tragic. Uh, incident that I regret happened.
The question we do are asking is, is the conversation that leading to the events after that, um. And I seen the dialogue that you had, that you said that you was gonna work with the families on the like, the. The lease of the property. But then when they went inquire, the, the lease was already terminated.
Yeah, because he had gone through the, the legal process.
No, no, what I'm saying is that he, I understand the legal process, but he has documents that he not had been delinquent on that. He was. Made a payment, even though it was a back payment. Um, he made a back payment, but it wasn't received, it was sent back. So just like right now, your back payment that you had paid was a parcel that you had paid, that you felt that you was in the right to not to pay it. Right? Same like how he felt in that time, he was in the right not to pay it. Cause he felt that he had a faulty house. He was battling this for a long time. Yes, it was a long period of time. But, but I'm trying to make the same here is that you had multiple. Emails multiple times to vacate the property. You ignored it. The reason why I'm bringing this up, and I, and I found this out recently. Is the reason why none of this went to um, uh, consult, uh, excuse me, to the commission is because of the preview of the chair. So the chairs previously to, um, I, I'm just telling you. So I'll just go give you, cause you, I, I, you don't have to go ask for it. I'll, I'll send it to you.
Sure, sure.
Okay, so the preview of what you had said to me and what had Joby at the time had a different last name. Who she, she was working for you. She, I don't know if she was married or that was another name. But she had another name, I don't know her, her name already. But then, at that time, Joby was there. So Joby told the family that that's their policy. And later on, they changed. And she said, oh, we gotta go check that. See, you was quoted that you was gonna do a thorough investigation. And you was gonna work with the family on the lease. But wait now, you already knew, Joby and yourself already knew. That the lease was canceled. So why would you make a statement like that? Um, in the news or wherever they put them, on the Hawaiian Homes level. I would you make a statement like that when you knew that the lease was expired? And then why is it different between them? In a long-term battle and with your situation as not paying on the five acre parcel? But what is the difference between the two? Because delinquency is delinquency. Once they tell you to vacate the property. They'll vacate the property. But you did not vacate the property. They didn't send the sheriffs. It didn't go to the commissioners. Commission is not being act. The A G not being act. All of these things didn't be enacted. I just like know why.
Well, you're, got two different situations. I don't think they're, I don't think they're similar at all. Uh, you got somebody that went through twenty years of uh. You know, negotiations, illegal contest a case, uh, court case, uh, Supreme Court. Uh, you had a contract, that he had a contract where he was obligated to pay. The mortgage and if not, subject to cancellation. So there was a concerted effort by the commission. I mean, they reduce his monthly, I think to something like fifty bucks a month. They were trying to work with the guy. And I, when I was involved in the litigation. Uh, offered to come in and fix his house, like we did on, I think all of them, except his. And so. You know, there's only so much you can do uh, with respect to uh, an individual that has taken a stand. An individual that has taken a stand and I, I mean, I'm not questioning whether it was right or wrong, he was very passionate about it. And he was well respected from what I understand. Uh but to, you know, beyond that, there's just so much you can do. With the situation with the uh, the uh commercial property that our nonprofit has. Like I said, there was a situation where uh we were doing things which were justified for the reduction in the rent. Then we migrated over to the Village Center and then we started to pay the uh increased rent once we finished that work. And so when the department unilaterally, contrary to the written agreement and. That we had entered into, which was subject to A G approval, which was never obtained, charged me, you know, two years retroactively rent. Now, they had been cha- charging me at an amount for those two years, which was under the original license and we paid it. So yeah, I, I felt that that was inappropriate because we had done activity that justified that five thousand dollar amount discount. And so that's a different situation than you're talking with Gilbert Smith.
What parcel you're talking about is a four hundred thousand dollar a year parcel. Um and you keep the lights on, forty, forty thousand dollars a month, um you pay D H H L how much a month?
About hundred ninety eight thousand a year.
Hundred eighty nine, hundred ninety eight thousand. This is the thing that I'm concerned about. So now you're seeing on the, your license six or three agreement that you had, first executed. Where is in the documents that saying that cause you was gonna do the Non-Aquilly Village, that was gonna alter or adjust your rent? Blah, 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 and all that. Is that, is that any place written that you can share with the senators?
And you know, that, that's my fault for not having a meeting of minds and me as an attorney, I. You know, they always say get things in writing, but you would think that especially when they're active in, actively involved in. Working with me to get this Non-Aquilly Village Center thing done, that they would appreciate that as, and that would justify the discount. That was never written, that was kind of like a assumed thing on my part. Uh being a lawyer, I. That, that's a fault on me not to get those guys to upfront amend the lease. Uh or license, uh like the, like I should have. So that was, and so that, you know, that, uh I guess I could make an argument that uh. That, that wasn't agreed to. But the thing is, we don't, I don't, I don't think they dispute that we did and made that Non-Aquilly Village Center a reality. And that was primarily through our nonprofit.
But what I'm saying is, non-payment is non-payment.
So we paid it.
No, no, no.
Yeah, we paid it.
Non-payment is non-payment. And this is something that was said time after time, when it came to other beneficiaries. That had to go beside, before uh the commissioners for lack of payment of their contract.
Right.
So you had a lack of payment on your contract for, I don't know, how much years?
Sure.
Did you ever go behind, before the commission to tell them your case and tell them that, hey, I did this for you guys? How am I, how am I getting penalized?
Well, you got all the emails and you can see that I had asked that to get credit for the work. And allow the discount rather than retroactively nailing me with two uh, two years of retroactive rent. By the way, that money basically depleted our uh nonprofit account and so that was a big hit for us. We're a nonprofit. Uh but again, I didn't want that to be an issue. We paid the rent and I got a more important thing that I wanna focus in.
But you was feeling that you was being wrong, like, like most of the homesteaders have contracts. But you was being wrong from all the great things that you did in Non-Aquilly Village, you was being wrong. Not one time that you was thinking to take your case to the commissioners. To hear your plea before this way other hand and they ask you to vacate. You can see, the problem that I have is that we go ahead and during COVID, we did terminate some leases. And I got that from some of my friends that in work and around Hawaiian Homestead. But then again, what I'm trying to get at is that. They ask you to vacate. You stood your ground, stood there today on the contamination that is on the property, never vacated, paid your rent, yes you did. Thank you for that, but question is, would you have paid? And would you continue to contest it if you wasn't a nominee, a director for Hawaiian Homes, would you have paid it?
I probably would have contested if I wasn't going for this job. But I, I don't want, like I said, I don't want to make that an issue when I become the director, if I become the director. And so we decided collectively, uh the other people that work with me at the uh A C D B to make that payment.
So other people that got evicted, not just talking about on Mister Smith, other people that got evicted or lost their lease or their contract. With Hawaiian Homes in the time period that maybe that you was there on that parcel when you wasn't paying your license. Do you think it's fair to the other homesteaders, other people that probably put it, put in one R S P for that property? And probably pay per market value, whatever. Do, do you think that is fair, colleague?
Well, we're never delinquent on our rent, in a sense. I don't know, but like I said, that was a disputed amount.
I understand that, but you never disputed it.
No, but I paid the invoices that they sent me for those two years.
But, but what I'm saying is.
Every, every invoice I was submitted.
I was taking it to the commission.
We paid those rents that were invoiced.
Saying when you was, when you was dealing, they asked you to vacate the property, you know that you was in the right. Why didn't you tell Ayla, like how you asked him to adjust the rent, the email on his going out? Why didn't you ask him, put me on the commission, so I can explain to them on my delinquency? So that we have this, because now, like I said, you've been saying right now, uh colleague, that you wouldn't have paid it. But then if you didn't pay, you're, then you're delinquent and you should be evicted.
Well, again, I guess it's just a dispute or disagreement.
That's, that's, that's the transparency that I'm kind of concerned with.
Well, you know, the thing is, uh you were saying I should have taken it to the commission. I took it to Ayla, the, the action with increase the rent was administrative action, it wasn't a commission action.
Yeah.
So administrative, we just tried to resolve it. And before Ayla left, before Ayla left, I said, I told him, you know, Ayla, why don't we take this to a third party mediator, independent of you, me? Get a decision. And he didn't do that. I verbally asked him to do that and he didn't take me up on that uh offer.
Yes, that's, that's the only thing, is if you feel that you was in the right.
I, I do. I still do today that I think.
That's the concern. So again, question, the last question, we're gonna just kind of summarize. Uh which son works for the A G office at this time? You have a son working for the A G's office?
No.
Thank you.
So the. Commission action would come up as a function of an eviction proceeding, right? Up until that point, it's administrative action?
Uh what, what kind of situation?
So they can, in the institution of your, of your uh lease rent dispute. The department had not, the, the department did not initiate formal eviction proceedings.
No.
Prior to you settling the, the disagreement.
There was no uh.
Okay, so, so there was no opportunity for commission action because there was no eviction proceeding initiated by the administration, right? I just wanna make sure I understand.
Well, I never got to that uh point of actually instituting eviction. I mean, there was this on- ongoing dialogue as to resolving. Uh the situation, so. So there was also, there was also an issue about environmental stuff, so we needed to address.
Right, so there was no contested case initiated because there was no formal action taken by the administration.
Other than sending me a letter.
Preliminary communication between.
The only thing I was getting from the department was this new invoice with this large lump sum tacked on to it unilaterally by them. And so, like I said, I personally think it was.
Well, I just wanna, so I just wanna make sure that, that I understand.
Yeah, there's no.
The distinction that you're saying is a distinction. Uh in regard to Senator Favela's questions, the. The commission in this type of lease payment scenario normally take action based off of an administrative. Recommendation that they, that they evict or that they foreclose on a lease.
Yeah.
And it hadn't gotten to that point yet. It will not get to that point because you elected before the department needed to take that extraordinary step. To just settle the issue.
Senator, if the uh department had taken the step of requiring us to do a E A. Uh they also wanted us to uh come up with a uh, a plan, which we've done, we've submitted. They also um, you know, are uh okay with the existing rent that's being charged. So we're not uh delinquent on that. We have our insurance, you know, we're working with the subtenants, including, like I mentioned, uh. Uh consultant to monitor the environmental stuff. And remediate it where, where needed.
Okay. I'll use the, I have the questions, I'll use.
And then just, just before I go to Senator Yehara, um we do have a hard stop at five thirty with the um I T team on the Zooms in the room, so. F Y I, but we got, it's five o'clock now. So Senator Yehara?
Just on a follow up.
Yeah.
I thought I saw a number of letters um saying that this is your notice that you're. You're to kind of find it, you're to vacate the property. Um so you didn't, and I think, was it one of them certified mail too? I thought, do you recall, I think I saw a certified mail. Uh so you didn't treat those as. Wh- why, why didn't you, you're waiting for a police? What, what are you waiting for after you got the letter that said um you're to vacate?
Yeah, that was, that was an administrative letter. Uh it wasn't from the A G's office. I mean, the thing about it is uh when I got it, I immediately contacted them and went into uh.
Contacted who?
The department, Hawaiian Homes. And so we went into a discussion. And then it, you know, evolved into uh a settlement agreement or an agreement whereby uh we needed to. And you, you know, this is a long, I mean, we've had that license for over, I don't know, fifteen years or so. And uh, you know, so it got to the point where rather than evicting, I mean, you got all these sub tenants. You know, it's, it's a lot more involved than, you know, H C D B, you're vacating. We had like sixteen or eighteen tenants, mostly native Hawaiian business guys, about eighty percent of them. And so it, it's not, you get a letter and that's it. You, you know, you turn the lights off and you vacate. I mean, it evolved a lot more. And also I wanted to uh make the argument that there is no violation. We're carrying on our rent, we, you know, we uh have our insurance, we have tenants that uh are paying. You know, we're uh, so the letter that was sent and, you know, I, I think was inappropriate. So we got into uh dialogue and we, we entered into different agreements as well as uh. You know, figured out a way moving forward.
So it was, so the. So you might be saying this, and I don't know where's your mouth, but if I hear it right, if I hear it right. It was your understanding that they never had the intent to actually have you leave?
No, they wanted me to leave uh with that letter, yeah, they wanted me to leave.
But, so you didn't help facilitate that?
No, because I, I thought, well, let's talk about it and uh figure out a more viable.
Appeal process or?
Yeah, see, they, they initiated, yeah.
Yeah, they.
So that letter, certified letter that.
It's like final notice.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's from the administration. It's, it's not from the A G or.
Yeah, so we're getting to an attorney, I guess we need questions. Are you, are you practicing attorney now?
No, I uh retired my license.
When was that?
Uh I think a couple of years now.
Okay, but you're familiar with conflict of interest.
Oh, yeah, very well aware of that.
But you couldn't lose your turn. If you have a license, then you could lose your license if you.
No, no, I didn't, I, I didn't worry about that.
Kind of look at the guardrails, cause you know, it says, so we'll be, actually, one of the um medias calls you a developer. So would you consider yourself a developer?
Uh nonprofit developer, yeah.
Okay, so were you ever a private developer?
Uh. No, it's mostly nonprofit, nonprofit.
Uh so you didn't uh.
You look at my uh.
Oh, no, no, so, but, but so you have, or you were a private little bit? No, so, okay, so that's, simple question. You're always a nonprofit and you're, you're never a profit, a, a corporation that had uh, that would, that could make profit. And development makes profit.
Well, you know, you gotta make some profit, even as a nonprofit, to pay bills and do more projects.
Yeah, so it's so bad, I mean, I'm just trying to, I'm still on this um, um, so. Cause I might agree with your wife. Cause you're doing all this developer work and you're not, you know, so you're only getting like.
Yeah.
Always a range, um.
Not very much, man.
Yeah, so.
I mean, even the Non-Aquilly Village Center, we haven't received one penny in profit or development fee, man. The, the Palimakano Non-Aquilly, I think we've made uh maybe five percent profit on that thing. And so my wife always gives me grief about when are you gonna start making money and uh, I don't know.
Right, so you, you would consider yourself pretty unusual in that regard?
Yeah, money, money is, you know, money is not a big thing.
Okay, it's good, so um. I, so I gotta ask this, I'm not, so have you gotten any benefit from any, any of the developers? Private developers, the corporate develop, that the nonprofit partnered with?
Uh, well.
They didn't get you a house or a car?
No, no.
Okay, good.
I wish they would, but they wouldn't.
Okay, good, good. I take that as a reciprocal response.
As a going away present.
So I just wanna put down that, cause you're gonna get, I would imagine you're gonna get this accusation that you're favoring your nonprofit.
I, I will favor my nonprofit, I'll recuse myself, but they have, they bought a good stuff.
Use any of the public resources and benefit your resources to favor nonprofit?
No, what I mean is, I, I'd like my nonprofit A C E B and again, I'm accusing myself, so they, they got to decide.
But can maneuver it so that in effect, the refusal is not worth of your refusal?
Not gonna do that.
Okay, so that's, that's my point. So I just wanted to, I'm trying to get assurances upfront that um you mean what you say.
I mean what I say.
Good, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh. So under the, okay, there's like a lot of chatter, I.
Please, yeah.
What I'm.
So no chatter in the audio.
Use your gavel.
Under, at the confirmation of the last director back in twenty nineteen. There was a lot of discussion and a lot of controversy around the issuance of licenses. For lands not suitable for a homestead development. Your Non-Aquilly Vill- Village Center project is uh an example of a homestead association coming forward. And obtaining a lease from the department, a license, right? For, for that type of parcel. To do uh activities aside from residential agriculture pastoral.
Right.
Homestead utilization. So a lot of the discussion the last time around the confirmation of Chair Ayla. Was around whether the department. Uh in those situations where there are parcels that you cannot use for homestead development, whether the department is required. To issue licenses to homestead associations who would like to utilize or beneficiaries. Uh who would like to utilize those, those lands for non-homestead purposes. Revenue generation, mercantile, what have you. Or whether those lands need to, uh whether licenses for development of those lands need to be procured under one seventy one. Which is authorized under section two oh four.
Right.
So, you know, I think your situation was maybe an outlier compared to. Larger, more controversial projects like the, like the interjects, the, the solar farm project, like Kamakana Lee.
Right.
Like some of these other parcels where they were procured and non-beneficiary organizations. Or like the cattle project on the Big Island where a beneficiary, a native Hawaiian got the contract, but he wasn't from the Big Island. You know, yours is a bit of an outlier, cause the homestead association went forward, proposed the activity, you helped, the department said, great. Makes sense, but where there are disputes about the utilization of those lands. Where homestead associations or beneficiaries might wanna come in and say, I got an idea for this thing, the department. Uh in reviewing under fiduciary responsibility, the best use of those properties for the totality of the, the trust. How are you gonna approach those types of, those types of situations?
Well, right now, the priority is gonna be that uh strategic plan, the twenty projects, so that, that's a given.
So that's aside from that, I, I'm not talking about. I'm talking about if Kamak, uh whenever Kamakana Lee's lease uh comes up.
Hmm.
Right? Um you can procure for another operator, you can potentially uh re-lease the. The mall to the existing operator to continue to generate revenue for, for lot, lot development in other areas. But what do you do if a homestead association or a consortium of homestead associations comes forward and says, by right, under the act, you gotta give me that mall? So that we can develop it, so that we can generate revenue for our organization. How are you gonna treat the dispute?
Well, you know, my, my uh thought, and that's partly the reason why I got involved with the Non-Aquilly Homestead Community. Association was to empower the. And that's partly the reason why I got involved with the Non-Akuli Homestead Community Association, was to empower the homesteads. And uh so that was actually what you're talking about is a a good example of doing that, what you're talking about. And so with uh going forward, uh you know, even on the two oh four uh stats or section. And the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act, the commission, they they changed the policy whereby in the issuance under one seventy one uh through two oh four. The this, the Act specifically says that you can give preference to a native Hawaiian-controlled organization. Uh prior to leasing it out to others. I intend to resurrect that preference uh moving forward. So I, you know, I I'm I'm very supportive of empowering the communities, whether it's through two oh seven mercantile license. Or asserting and uh following the two oh four with this preferential treatment. And so, you know, my idea is to reach out to the Oahu's out there or, you know, talk with them. About them being active and maybe getting into partnerships. But part of the challenge in these organizations you're talking about, they lack the capacity, the ability to, in fact, in the Non-Akuli sense. Uh Non-Akuli Homestead could not have moved forward, but for uh two of my partners that put up personal guarantees. In order to get the uh the funding for the the development of that project. So it's a reality. And so I wanna try and uh eliminate that 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 hurdle. But not not only giving site control, but assisting these commercial, excuse me, community and homestead organization developments. So we have about six projects that we're looking at whereby it is the homestead associations and. Uh entities associated with them that wanna do these types of projects that you're talking about. So one of the things that we wanna try and do is uh make it more viable. You know, a lot of the the hurdle is over the infrastructure, lack of infrastructure, like the Non-Akuli Village Center. We had to go and get a G I, G I A grant to put in the backbone infrastructure before we could move the. The uh housing as well as the commercial center and the uh cultural center. So that's one area that I think the department can help, is putting in infrastructure that will facilitate. And allow access as well as more importantly, these organizations to go moving forward.
Would you say you also have an obligation as a fiduciary to the, to the beneficiaries outside of those communities?
Sure.
To ensure that those associations or beneficiary organizations that come forward to say, we wanna take over this project. Have the internal capacity to maintain those projects, so you don't end up with leases that are underwater.
Yeah.
That could potentially cost the department additional revenue to save to the detriment of everybody else on the waitlist.
Oh, yeah, that's that's definitely true. It has to be a practical and fiscal responsible decision. And that's where the commission comes in. All this this will be vetted by the commission. It will be a commission decision, not a Kali Watson decision.
Okay, so that's, that's one part of it. And again, I think that, you know, what happened in. Not Non-Akuli Village Center is a model for.
Yeah.
There are, you you have already know, you already know and have heard from other communities. That wanna do that same sort of thing because they see, they see adjacent. Uh lands adjacent to homesteads that are underutilized, that they really wanna use so that they can do their own community development, whether it's.
Sure.
You know, facilities or agricultural assets or what have you. But again, there are going to be, especially on Oahu, especially on the west side. These parcels where multiple parties would like to utilize the properties.
Sure.
And how do you manage it then? Given the fact that my my understanding from the prior administration is that there was really some discomfort about allotting. Procurement preferences to native Hawaiians, given the nature of our um.
Yeah, I wanna change that. I wanna change that. I wanna give the.
Well, given the nature.
Yeah.
Of the change in posture of the United States Supreme Court and how they've treated preferences for. Uh preferences on racial lines, especially as it relates to Indian country. And uh other activities really similar to D H H L.
Yeah, it's a dangerous time right now, especially with the U S Supreme Court, uh its makeup, so. You know, we have to hopefully tread on or stay under the radar, but it doesn't mean we're gonna be uh. You know, afraid to move forward and, you know, I I don't mind, uh especially where I'm trying to empower the Hawaiian communities. We gotta move forward and I'm I'm not gonna, you know, top towel or be afraid because uh, you know, the. And and but I do have to be diligent and uh uh sensitive to the exposure to the program. So I'm not gonna ignore that, but that's where the lawyers kinda kick in. That's where we need a stronger relationship with the congressional delegation so we can uh get statutes passed that. Insulate and protect the program.
Well, now you're talking decades, you know, talking about several years.
But we can do stuff right now. We don't have to wait decades to empower the community, just like we did in Non-Akuli Village Center.
Well, so I, yeah, I would hope to, I guess in conclude, I would hope that you move aggressively on some of these models. Similar to Non-Akuli Village Center where associations are ready and willing to go in. Hopefully, the ones that are not as ready or have the the willingness to engage in partnerships. To ensure that those projects are not going to end up underwater. But in the conflict situations, I I am still concerned. About making sure we can do it in a way that's fair to the community, but that also protects the interests of the rest of the beneficiaries. Who are waiting for homes um as it relates to those properties.
Those are valid concerns, Senator. So I'll I'll be mindful of that. But I think the value is me being the director is I've gone through the development process. So I can help shepherd these uh communities that wanna get into it and uh hopefully that uh knowledge will help them move forward.
Well, part of why we tried to get the cash was because of all of the heartburn from the beneficiary communities about using lands for revenue generation. When you and I both know, a lot of that revenue generation was the only revenue being devoted toward lot development for a long time.
Hmm, sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Remember, is any other questions?
Some of the follow up, just just going forward, um Ali, just that um. Reason why nothing was executed and and I I wanna go back and look and I'm gonna show my colleagues, but. Is why nothing was executed, I followed just again recently. Day-to-day operations for Hawaiian homes and come to leasing and commercial parcels. Is the preview of the director chair of the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. So when the department was sending you letters from the department or whoever was sending you the letters and. You ain't call up, whoever you ain't call up to negotiate on the phone, you didn't take it seriously because you said. It was very hard for you, as your nonprofit, to leave the parcel person. Because you have a lot of tenants, right? That's the reason why you didn't vacate, because you wanted to negotiate, you didn't wanna vacate. You wanted to negotiate because you have a lot of tenants on the property that your nonprofit has. Right?
Well, to be quite frank about it, that was our source of income for my nonprofit. So I wanted to protect that, obviously. Uh it it also entail providing uh. Industrial lots for native Hawaiian uh businesses, which, you know, I I also have affinity towards and and trying to help and protect. And so when you have a combo where a nonprofit that relies on this fund as well as tenants that, you know. Are operating businesses successfully, uh yeah, you know, I'm vested in making sure that both sides are protected.
Yeah, so you said eighty percent that was native Hawaiian.
Yeah.
Uh much of them was fifty percent.
I don't know if they're fifty.
Okay, let me go forward. So you said that your nonprofit cannot relinquish. Um you have a lot of tenants. So what I wanted to explain to you is that I love a lot of nonprofits that don't pay their lease. Don't pay their rent, whatever it is, and they take over by another nonprofit. They wanna continue to take the license and take over the uh tenants and go forward. I see, was there no opportunity because the director and your nonprofit never vacated? So if you vacated, you told your tenants that you're gonna have to leave, then it's up to the Hawaiian homes or other other nonprofits to come in. And say, I I like run, find a good person, but they never had an opportunity. Because they never went through any process because it's a box stop with the director. And what I'm saying now, and then I will say it again, and I just said this to my colleagues, that and you said it many times. Yes, you're gonna be perfect because you love your nonprofit, which is great. But what about the waitlisters and the beneficiaries, when you start excu- uh uh excusing yourself from a lot of things that will be benefit? To Non-Akuli villages, because then now you're gonna have to excuse yourself. But see, the reason why I'm saying this is because you're not only the director, you're gonna be the chair of Hawaiian homes. So if you don't, you're not the chair and you and the chair is not leading this thing and you excuse yourself from a development. That is crucial to like Non-Akuli development, I mean, Non-Akuli village. How you cannot say that um your nonprofit is not gonna benefit even though you excuse yourself? But you still have the influence, and I know that. Because only a few people that spoke up, when they spoke up, it was. Pretty much wasn't gonna be re um put into commission, but with the deals that we are hearing and are making today. I think that's gonna change. Some of these guys are gonna get reappointed because of what the testimony and one of the stuff is supporting. So again, regardless of what you tried to say, that you can excuse yourself. That's not gonna benefit the beneficiaries when it comes to your protection over your nonprofit. You said that to my colleagues more than once today. That you're gonna encourage your nonprofit to move forward. How are you gonna encourage at the same time, wearing a director's hat? Why don't you take off that hat? You cannot encourage nothing because that's bias. You cannot be telling your nonprofit, just like right now, people tell the guy, hey, we'll do this with this grant. That's bias. Stepping away, stepping away, not saying that, oh, yeah, I wanna encourage them to continue on to create works that you you laid upon. That's not gonna help us as you being the director. Because how much times you think you might have to excuse them? You have over twenty different LLCs and 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 businesses. You know, so when are you gonna, uh did you already submit your uh financial disposer to us already yet?
Uh, no.
Okay, when when do you think you're gonna release that since you're ready right now?
I get confirmed.
If you get confirmed.
Whatever the process requires.
I mean, most of the directors and deputy directors gave us the financial uh information already.
Yeah.
Only a few.
I'm I'm not sure to be quite frank about it.
It's a good chair.
But if it's required, I mean.
I just gotta go forward and think that we're gonna benefit of your being chair. I know we get time, he's saying, so whatever, I'll just you.
Okay, okay, I think in the interest of time, we need to take a vote. So um is it okay if we just go with decision-making at this point in time?
You know that I'm out ready to, I haven't.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, you mentioned that to me earlier. Yeah, yeah, so I know that, yeah.
So I'm gonna go whichever way you're gonna recommend, I'm gonna go where we are, because I do wanna interview and I have a few other questions, but it just helped a lot.
Yes, sure. Okay, but yeah, it's a good little time. If I'm going to go ahead and issue my recommendation for this committee, you have the vote sheets, Vice Chair.
Hmm.
So I'm gonna recommend that we advise and consent um to Kali Watson. Um any questions or discussion? Okay, seeing the Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, uh Chair Sugar, uh you vote?
Aye.
Uh Vice Chair, name, Senator Ihaara?
Uh reservations?
Okay, Senator Kejo Colole?
Aye.
Senator Richards?
Aye.
He misses.
Okay, congratulations, we are adjourned.